Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session. This Tuesday, September 5th, our regular meeting. It's good to see everyone this morning. Hope you enjoyed your holiday. We're going to get started. If you would, please rise and we'll do the prayer and the pledge. Father, we thank you today for your hand upon our life. God, we thank you, Lord, God, for safety from storms. We ask you to be with those who were impacted, God, as they continue to try to recover and rebuild, do things that we're very familiar with, God, that you've helped us with in the past. Father, we thank you today for everything that we have in front of us. We ask you to give us discernment and discretion, God, wisdom and understanding to know what to do and how to do. We thank you for the opportunity and for this time in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Merone, was there anything that needed to be amended to the agenda before we approve it?
No, sir, not reported to me, Aaron, nothing? No, sir.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as it's been printed?
So moved.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes and payment of county bills.
So moved.
And motion approved by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's all, so unanimous. Up next, we have public comments. I'm just taking them in order. I have them here. Michael, the first one that I have here is Mr. Anthony Del Campo. Is he in the room or is he attended by Zoom?
Right here.
All right. Please go forward, state your name. For the record, you have three minutes, sir. Please take your hat off inside the building.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm coming back just to see follow-up on our comprehensive plan. I know that we spoke in the last, I spoke in the last commissioner meeting. I didn't get a date. I think it's very important for our county to have that with the amount of disasters that we can have here, and I just want to follow up to see what the status is. We do, I, I, I take pride in having a plan, and you guys are our leaders, so I just want to see where we're at.
Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments this morning.
So we don't have a?
Sir, you asked to speak in public comments. We're not having the dialogue.
Okay.
We might can address it when we get past public comments, but other people wanting to speak as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Lynn Wilder?
Hi there, good morning. I gave you a handout, I think, and I'm not going to go through it. I'm here to talk about Keep Franklin County Beautiful, a program that we're working to start, so it's an effort in progress right now, and I'm just here to give you a progress report. I was here a few months ago and told you real briefly about it. It is just a summary. It is a, an affiliation of the Keep America Beautiful program, so that's a nationwide litter recycling beautification nonprofit. So we, we would be under the Keep Florida Beautiful program and working with the 40-plus other affiliates within the state. So here are the efforts to date. I met with A.J. Tony Smith. I presented to the, both the East Point and St. George Island Civic Clubs, presented to the Mayor of Carabel, Appalachia City Commission, Carabel City Commission, and several calls with Fonda because this does have to do with recycling. We've started a, just a real grassroots effort to collect aluminum cans. You may have heard on Oyster Radio or seen it in the paper. Every Appalachia Cola, Farmers Market, we're there to collect cans so people can just come and drop them off. Trying to expand that into Carabel, East Point, and St. George Island. Obviously, I can't do it just with one or two people, so we'll have to get some help. We have applied for becoming an affiliate, and that application has been accepted by Keep America Beautiful. So now we have a year to complete the tasks that we need to complete before we're an affiliate, a real affiliate. And the advantages of being an affiliate are in that handout I passed out. So they've got national experience. We've got all the experience with our state affiliates. They have the eyes and, or they have ears and eyes in our state legislature. I think this year, we got a, they, each group got a $15,000 grant from DOT to work on one of the three efforts, or all three of them, so beautification, recycling, and litter. The next steps, the first thing we have to do is complete a community litter index, which is kind of interesting. So we divide the county into five different areas, and then each of those different areas, we divide into 10, and then kind of go count the litter and figure out what the types of litter are in each area and relative amounts of it, because we know Carabel's different than Appalachia's different than some, somewhere in the forest. So, and then we do that every year to see if we make progress, and if we don't, we kind of readjust what we're doing. So I'd like your help in that. I mean, one of the obvious ones would be do it by district, commission district, and that's about where we are right now. We're real excited. There's about six of us that are the community participants right now. They are focused mostly over in, I'm going to say, East Point and Appalachia Cola, so if you guys have folks in Lanark or Alligator Point, other places that would like to get involved with this, or if any of you would, it would be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Mr. Merone, we need to have a discussion with Mr. Fonda and see if we need to maybe put this on a future agenda so we can actually discuss it.
Okay.
With Ms. Wilder and actually be able to take the steps.
Mr. Davis, out of the audience.
I know, but I'm saying, I'm just saying, we are in public comments, but we do maybe need to add this to an agenda.
Okay.
Can I just, Chairman? We used to have, excuse me, we used to have Keep Franklin County Beautiful. What happened to it? I don't know, so maybe we can answer that question and come back, because we used to have it.
All right, and the only other one I have, it seems like to me is Debbie Jordan, but it's issue specific, so.
Yes.
So we'll try to handle it when we get to that issue on the agenda. All right. For Sheriff Smith, camera system?
Good morning. Ginger Colter, Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Hope everybody had a good restful weekend, nice long weekend. The Sheriff's Office sent over a quote earlier this year, and Major Varnes, I believe, passed it out to you this morning or gave it to Michael. The camera system in the Sheriff's Office is needing to be upgraded and replaced. We have checked around a couple of different quotes. We have one that is, quite honestly, way out of the ballpark. It's, it's really quite expensive. It's $143,628 for one year, so we're really not interested in that product, even though it's a wonderful product. We understand that it's just not feasible. The Red Wire can use a lot of our existing equipment and build upon what we already have, replacing some of the cameras that are down. We have multiple cameras that are out. They are not working, and that poses a safety issue for the Sheriff's Office, the jail. And there's also a few blind spots where we need to add additional cameras as well. Red Wire did break it down into four different quotes, projects for us. They consider them different projects because some are adding cameras, it's transitioning cameras to HDTV, and it's adding the video intercom system to the four exterior doors. So you do have four separate quotes, but the grand total for everything is $66,905.64. We wasn't sure how to proceed with this, if we wanted to put it in as a capital outlay for this year or next fiscal year. That's at the discretion of the board, but it is something that the Sheriff's Office, the jail is going to need.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this, you said this is not included in his tentatively approved $7 million budget this year?
It is, it is not, no.
Okay.
It is not, because it's a capital outlay, and I know in the past y'all had wanted us to kind of keep that separate for consideration, so it is not.
Yeah, we, we've kept it separate, but we also did it at budget time, you know what I mean? So this will just be how we can approach to try to get it paid for, because we've already tended to approve a budget we can go down but can't go up.
Yeah, we do have a repair and maintenance line item for the county jail, and we do have that each and every single year, you know, so we could always fund it out of there if it is necessary.
Okay.
And Red Wire too, you already have a, it's part of a continuing service agreement.
We do have an existing account with Red Wire. It is not for the camera system. It is for our, the FOB system, getting in and out of the jail and the facilities. We're very happy with Red Wire. They're very responsive if we have issues with something being down or something not working properly. They're very prompt, so we are very pleased with them, and that's another reason, even though the other company has all the bells and whistles, we're not familiar with them, and we would rather go with someone that we know is going to be there when we need it.
And is there any one particular quote that is more urgent than the others?
Major Varnes, would you like to answer that? Because he is the jail administrator, he would know which one is the priority. Is it going to be the additional cameras or the repairs of the cameras?
The repairs of the cameras.
The repairs of the existing cameras.
Which would be the first, it says MVR repairs.
Which one is that, you know?
On Red Wire, this should be the first page.
Is it going to be the 21, 21,800?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven, the 27,845. That's going to be the priority, is that one. Thank you, Aaron.
And could that be done by September 30th? Is that possible?
The work?
Mm-hmm.
Could that work be done by September 30th? Could Robert do that by September 30th?
I mean, I'll see.
We can find out.
Okay, okay.
We can find out.
Ms. Griffin, you asking that particular reason?
As far as for, yeah, for the current year's budget or for next year's budget, as far as for the jail repair line item?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So what, what action do we need to consider then? So if the answer is yes, do they need to be able to give the opportunity to proceed, or what, what does the board need to do this morning?
I would see, yes, if they could go ahead and get a motion to proceed with the repair of the cameras, and then we can actually address the other three quotes during the new fiscal year.
Okay, and I do like the way they broke it down by projects, that we can do it along the way if we need to.
Yeah, okay, well, if you're saying that we have the money in that line item to handle the first request, and they can let us know if they can actually finish it in this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I would entertain a motion to do that then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank y'all. Unless there's other questions Commissioners have.
They got to ask.
Well, you, you need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to proceed. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, and the motion we're making is to go after the first amount here, the 27,845.
Correct.
And try to get it done in this calendar year if we can, because that's what we, there's money in the budget for this calendar year.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank y'all. Mr. Howard Neighbors, who's attending Public Works?
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Morning, well.
I got probably a couple acts now, but the storm and stuff, which we got lucky on, a few trees through the county that was down, but we did get a little bit of flooding, but this time it was from the bays, you know, not the gulf, so St. George Island and Alligator Point, a lot of your roads went underwater, so. We cleaned the roads, which we got some grading stuff we still got to do. When it dries out a little bit, it's still wet, so as soon as it dries out, we'll get them roads fixed and get them back in shape. Still grass cutting, wide open on that, so still hanging in there. And the other things I got, I would like to ask for the Board's approval on three of my inmate supervisors to be moved up from a one to a two, which is Jeremiah Orr, Mr. David Gilbert, and Sean Bankston.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I see.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, I got a, excuse me, a couple of other issues that, which I've talked to Aaron about some, is inmate supervisor three. I know with Evergreens, since we went through Evergreen, the highest we could go is a two, so we used to have a three, but they kind of did away with the three, and the reason that is, all my inmate, and nobody wants to watch inmates no more. They won't run equipment, a drive truck, where they can move up, so, and they already don't get no high risk, so.
What, what, what did, Mr. Howard, what did you ask for clarification on?
I think he's requesting that the inmate supervisor three be added back as, as one of the positions, as far as for the pay classifications.
Yeah.
How many inmate supervisors do we have?
We got six, but ain't but four have been watching inmates right now, so, because they've been so short.
Okay, are all of them now at inmate supervisor two?
Well, now I got, the three that I just named also one, which had to be moved to a two.
Yeah.
And Mr. Leon's already a two, but I would like to add that three back to, you know, where they could look forward to moving up in a few years, you know, to, you know, to a three, so.
Okay, I think that's something we can talk to Evergreen about, because we're going to talk to them this morning anyway.
I was going to tell you, Mr. Holcomb is online right now, so he'll be listening, and we'll talk to him then.
All right.
I guess we could ask him, getting a three or just increasing the range of the two might be the steps in the two, whichever way, you know?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that if they're out there, that's the risk that they take, considering that some of the issues that they've had in the past. I mean, I don't, I, I, I think we should look at that for sure.
Yeah.
Get those employees an incentive.
And you know, I have some of them coming to me, look, I mean, you know, we can't go hiring a two, you know, I want to move to something different, so. My last one I got is our lift that we got into the shop, which I don't think we had that in the, in the paperwork, was in the board report, is our lift is in bad shape, and it's very expensive. It's anywhere between $100 and $120,000 to replace that lift, and it's probably 25, maybe 27 years old, so.
You talking about the lift to put the vehicles on?
Yes, sir.
To work underneath them?
The vehicles and the Mack dump trucks and, you know, all departments use it, so.
Have you got any quotes on it yet, Howard?
We got some quotes. One, I think, was $95,000, one was like $125,000, so.
The, the quotes they have, do they actually have them available, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know that's been a problem in the past, not necessarily with this, but with other stuff.
And what it is, is the pins and stuff, when you raise a lift and flips down, it's wore out and bent up, and, and it just can't, it can't be replaced, so.
They've lifted a lot, waited for a lot of years, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, is, is that something, I guess, that you can bring us those quotes so we can try to look at what we can do?
I can, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, let's do that for the next meeting then.
Got it.
That way we can try to address it, and it won't be, at, at, at some point, you're going to have to have a lift.
Yeah, yes, sir. Well, that's unsafe, I mean, and, you know, Rusty don't come to me and say, look, you know, the pins ain't working, so it definitely needs to be replaced.
Way out of the ballpark. It's, it's really quite expensive. It's a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for one year. So, we're really not interested in that product, even though it's a wonderful product. We understand that it's just not feasible. The Red Wire can use a lot of our existing equipment and build upon what we already have, replacing some of the cameras that are down. We have multiple cameras that are out. They are not working, and that poses a safety issue for the sheriff's office, the jail. And there's also a few blind spots where we need to add additional cameras as well. Red Wire did break it down into four different quotes, projects for us. They consider them different projects because some are adding cameras. It's transitioning cameras to HDTV and is adding the video intercom system to the four exterior doors. So, you do have four separate quotes, but the grand total for everything is sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents. We wasn't sure how to proceed with this. If we wanted to put it in as a capital outlay for this year or next fiscal year, that's at the discretion of the board, but it is something that the sheriff's office, the jail, is gonna need.
Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this, you said this is not included in his tentatively approved seven million dollar budget this year?
It is not. No. It is not because it's a capital outlay, and I know in the past y'all had wanted us to kinda keep that separate for consideration, so it is not.
Yeah, we've, we've kept it separate, but we also did it at budget time. You know what I mean? So, this'll just be how we can approach to try to get it paid for because we've already tendered a budget. We can go down, but we can't go up.
Yeah, we do have a repair and maintenance line item for the county jail, and we do have that each and every single year. You know, so we could always fund it out of there if it is necessary. And Red Wire too, you already have a, it's part of a continuing service agreement?
We do have an existing account with Red Wire. It is not for the camera system. It is for our, the FOB system, getting in and out of the jail and the facilities. We're very happy with Red Wire. They're very responsive if we have issues with something being down or something not working properly. They're very prompt. So, we are very pleased with them, and that's another reason, even though the other company has all the bells and whistles. We're not familiar with them, and we would rather go with someone that we know is gonna be there when we need it.
And is there any one particular quote that is more urgent than the others?
Major Varnes, would you like to answer that? Because he is the jail administrator. He would know which one is the priority. Is it gonna be the additional cameras or the repairs of the cameras?
The repairs of the cameras.
The repairs of the existing cameras.
Which would be the first. It says MVR repairs.
Which one is that, you know?
On Red Wire. This should be the first page. Yeah.
Twenty-one thousand, eight hundred?
Twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven. The twenty-seven, eight forty-five. That's gonna be the priority. That's that one. Thank you, Erin.
And could that be done by September thirtieth? Is that possible?
The work?
Mm-hmm.
Could that work be done by September thirtieth? Could Robert do that by September thirtieth? We can find out. We can find out.
Ms. Griffin, you asking that particular reason?
As far as for, yeah, for the current year's budget or for next year's budget, as far as for the jail repair line item?
Right. Okay. So, what, what action do we need to consider then? So, if the answer is yes, do they need to be able to give it the opportunity to proceed, or what, what does the board need to do this morning?
Yes, if, if they could go ahead and get a motion to proceed with the repair of the cameras, and then we can actually address the other three quotes. To the new fiscal year.
And I do like the way they broke it down by projects, that we can do it along the way if we need to.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if you're saying that we have the money in that line item to handle the first request, and they can let us know if they can actually finish it in this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I would entertain a motion to do that then.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank y'all. Unless there's other questions commissioners have.
Well, you, you need a motion?
Yes. Need an motion to proceed. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, and the motion that we're making is to go after the first amount here, the twenty-seven, eight forty-five.
Correct.
And try to get it done in this calendar year if we can because that's what we, there's money in the budget for this calendar year.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, commissioners, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank y'all. Mr. Howard Neighbors, who's pretending to public works?
Good morning, commissioners. How y'all doing?
Morning, well.
I got probably a couple of action items, but the storm and stuff, which we got lucky on. Few trees through the county that was down, but we did get a little bit of flooding, but this time it was from the bays, you know, not the gulf. So, St. George Island and Alligator Point, a lot of your roads went underwater, so. We cleaned the roads, which we got some grading stuff we still got to do. When it dries out a little bit, it's still wet, so as soon as it dries out, we'll get them roads fixed and get them back in shape. Still grass cutting, wide open on that, so still hanging in there. And the other things I got, I would like to ask for the board's approval on three of my inmate supervisors to be moved up from a one to a two, which is Jeremiah Ward, Mr. David Gilbert, and Sean Bankston.
So move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, I got, excuse me, a couple of other issues that, which I've talked to Erin about some is inmate supervisor three. I know with Evergreens, since we went through Evergreen, the highest we could go is a two. So, we used to have a three, but they kinda did away with the three. And the reason that is, all my inmates, nobody wants to watch inmates no more. They won't run equipment, a drive truck, where they can move up, so. And they already don't get no high risk, so.
What, what, what did, Mr. Howard, what did you ask for clarification on?
I think he's requesting that the inmate supervisor three be added back as, as one of the positions, as far as for the pay classifications.
How many inmate supervisors do we have?
We got six, but ain't but four been watching inmates right now, so, 'cause they've been so short.
Okay. Are all of them now at inmate supervisor two?
Well, now I got, the three that I just named also one, which had to be moved to a two.
Yeah.
And Mr. Leon's already a two, but I would like to add that three back to, you know, where they could look forward to moving up in a few years, you know, to, you know, to a three.
Okay. I think that's something we can talk to Evergreen about, 'cause we're gonna talk to them this morning anyway.
I was going to tell you, Mr. Holcomb is online right now, so he'll be listening, and we'll talk to him then. I guess we could ask him, getting a three or just increasing the range of the two might be the steps in the two, whichever way, you know?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that if they're out there, that's the risk that they take, considering that some of the issues that they've had in the past. I mean, I don't, I, I, I think we should look at that for sure.
Yeah.
Get those employees an incentive.
And you know, I have some of them coming to me, looking, you know, we can't go hiring a two, you know, I wanna move to something different, so. My last one I got is our lift that we got into the shop, which I don't think we had that in the, in the paperwork. Was, in the board report, is, is our lift is in bad shape, and it's very expensive. It's anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to replace that lift. And it's probably twenty-five, maybe twenty-seven years old. It's old, so.
You're talking about the lift to put the vehicles on? Seems to work underneath them?
The vehicles and the Mack dump trucks and, you know, all departments use it, so.
Have you got any quotes on it yet, Howard?
We got some quotes. One, I think, was ninety-five thousand. One was like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so.
But the, the quotes they have, do they actually have them available, though?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I know that's been a problem in the past, not necessarily with lifts, but with other stuff.
And what it is, is the pins and stuff, when you raise the lift and flips down, it wore out and bent up, and, and it just can't, it can't be replaced, so.
They'd lift a lot, wait for a lot of years, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, is, is that something, I guess, that you can bring us those quotes, so we can try to look at what we can do?
I can, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, let's do that for the next meeting then.
Got it.
That way we can try to address it, and it won't be, at, at, at some point, you, you're gonna have to have a lift.
Yeah, yes, sir. Well, that's unsafe, I mean, and, you know, Rusty don't come to me and say, look, you know, the pins ain't working, so it definitely needs to be replaced.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Neighbors?
No, sir, that's all I got.
All right. Well, please get that information to us for the next meeting, so we can look at that. I will get with you after the meeting about some stuff in my district that I didn't call you about last week, 'cause we were in storm, storm mode last week, so.
Yeah.
But I'll get with you after the meeting. Anyone have anything for Mr. Neighbors?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to add that, you know, during the storm, these guys are on call. They were ready to go out. Thank God the Alligator Point Road held up, but. I mean, thank y'all for, for keeping an eye out. I know, thankfully, we, I know we've got a lot of complaints with drainage and such, but that's a given in any storm. But thank you and your crew for keeping an eye out.
You're welcome. Yeah, we had all our stuff on our stage in there, so we, we were ready to go just in case. And hey, the last minute, I think, turned, so very lucky.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I need to get with you afterwards, too. So, if I don't call you, call me.
I'll do it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I got one item. Mr. Chairman, a few years back, Franklin County had a contract with the state of Florida to maintain the ditches out there along Ninety-Eight in East Point and in Lanark. Lanark is not being done anymore by the county, but the grass and stuff that's in the ditches is higher than this podium right here. I mean, it's high. I hate to do it, but we need to write a letter to the state and the contractors that are working for the state to give them a, a heads up that they're gonna have to start maintaining the ditch. Had that hurricane shifted this way and hit that area, we would be today still picking up debris in those ditches because that grass would issue. Now, people may not think that, well, what's the problem? The problem is that that drainage, all that stuff drains into those ditches and then goes underneath the road to the outfall ditches and flows out into the bay. That's the way it's designed to be. Well, it's not doing it. It's stopping up in there because it has nowhere to go because it's got too much growth in there that it's coming over the roads and causing a traffic hazard. So, I'm, if, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm gonna make a motion that we write the, the state, or we can do a telephone call. It don't matter. Whatever, why, you wanna let us do a telephone call?
If you don't mind, I prefer, yes, let me contact Weber. Ben, Weber, I'm trying to change the name. And let me see what he says, the best way to approach, and I'll come back to you.
Okay, because one of the people that affects lives across from Bill Miller's house out there, and he even called the contract company. I think it's Weber, like I said, and they said it would be at least two weeks before they could see it, see about it. Well, it hasn't been mowed all summer, so we need to do something about it.
I will.
Because if we have a, a storm or something, that is something that's gonna be really, really bad, and they still haven't looked at those trees to cut them down out there either, so.
The trees might be on me because of, because I know the hurricane, I didn't mess with them with the trees, so I'm gonna wait till this week, so.
But they're still out there.
Yeah.
You got one, yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, I was gonna ask, since we're doing a, a phone conversation, do we still need to get a second and vote on this?
No, I'm good. I don't think so.
You're good with it?
Yeah, I'm good with making a call.
Report back to us, so we'll know what's going on.
And I, I can forward, you can forward her, Mr. Jacobs' phone number, 'cause I've, I've never had any issue getting in contact with him and calling him or texting him or emailing him.
I got a number from him, and I was told he was supposed to call me. He never did.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Benny, have him contact you.
Okay. He never did.
Also for the trees and also for the ditch.
Also for, you know, the trees, if you look all along the Ninety-Eighth side, you got a lot of trees that come down if we had a storm like that. So, we need to be very mindful of what we got, and, you know, my thing is, we don't have very many people to be able to cut the right of ways on the state right of ways.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner.
And so, that's the reason why, you know, it wasn't worth the money to do, but they needed to take care of it because the people are calling me thinking that the county didn't charge it.
Okay.
And we also got Ninety-Eight East Point and Ninety-Eight Appalachia also, commissioners, that also need to be cut.
That was gonna be my question. These are state right of ways. Me and you've had this discussion before, but I, I don't understand. Are we responsible to maintain these, these, these right of ways? Because if you go anywhere outside of Franklin County and look at the state right of ways, you see contractor companies, I'm assuming they're contracted with the state that maintains it, and it looks good. Ours looks like crap.
The county did have a contract back before my time, before I took over, and that was probably fifteen years ago. So, the county, you know, ain't got no contract with them.
But, but, yeah, and still they're not, I mean, I can see that if we were on the contract to maintain it, but we're not, there's no contract involved in this, but yet, and still, they're not taking care of their right of way.
That's correct, and we, we did cut Ninety-Eight and East Point, July fourth, 'cause they know it was terrible, so, and, uh, we did do that, so.
But that, that's what I was trying to get clarification on. So, we're not obligated in any way contractually to maintain these right of ways. This is something the state should be doing.
Correct.
Yeah, we definitely need to, uh, ring them up, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, uh.
It's nasty.
It is, and it, it causes a real problem.
Yeah.
The drainage issue is the bigger problem. Yeah, it don't look good, but the drainage issue is the bigger problem.
It doesn't even have to be a hurricane. I mean, we, we, we've had these extreme tides on the supermoon with, in, in the rainfall. This stuff needs to drain. I mean, look at, look at what happened over the weekend on the island, you know? I mean, it's, it's hard enough that we're so low in sea level wise.
Yes.
We at least need to, you know, especially on those bigger drain systems like that, that's that close to the waterfront, and it's a state, they need to, they need to definitely.
But, but back years ago, we could do it, you know, we had so many inmates. We'd get forty inmates a day, thirty-five to forty, and we had two state, you know, squads coming out also with seven, you know, seven, eight of the inmates, so back then, you know, we could maintain it, and now we're so short, so.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it's not our, it's not our responsibility. They just step up. We pay taxes.
That's correct.
They get our money.
Chairman, I can add to that.
Yes.
An information item in my report, involved by a lawsuit that was filed against the county for maintaining ditches allegedly from the East Point area that caused flooding. This gentleman says to his property, so now we've been dragged into this lawsuit on the state right of way, hope we have in the past, allegedly according to the property owner, been maintaining the ditches along Highway Ninety-Eight and East Point. You just heard, Highway Ninety-Eight and Appalachia, so there's also the litigation risk that ends up costing the county money to defend itself. Just to reinforce what you're saying.
Well, and just one more point. One more point, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make with Michael. When you talk to, is it Benny Jacobs?
Mm-hmm, it is.
When you talk to him, let him also know that they need to be careful of the herbicide that they're using spraying those ditches. You know how we've got the rule on the herbicide and stuff? Well, apparently, they, he thought that he could just spray the herbicide and it would do. And just make sure that he understands we've got a, a rule in Franklin County on the top herbicide that can use to do.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Howard, thank you.
I need to point out the herbicide rule, 'cause I seen some fences that made it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director? You're up next, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have one action item for you this morning, and also I have a couple of items I wanna discuss. The first action item is Michael Messer has resigned from Parks and Recreation Department. It's dated as of Thursday, August the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And I'm asking for board's approval to fill the vacant position.
So move a comment.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I hate to hear that. Mr. Messer was an asset to the Parks and Rec Department, so I wish him luck in his future endeavors, but let him know that, I don't know if you have contact with him, but just let, he's, he's, he's an asset. It's gonna be greatly missed, so, in that department, just want to let everybody know.
One more comment on that. Have you got somebody that can do the fields and stuff like he used to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 'cause that's what, I mean, he was so good at that.
Right.
Knew the dimensions and everything.
He went on at his own time, I think, at some point sometime ago, 'cause I got a call, and I'm like, hey, from a, from a parent, a baseball parent. And the next thing I know, Michael's out there, I think on his own time, doing some stuff, but anyway.
Hate to see that.
Yeah.
That, that whole family's been involved with youth athletics, two years, umpiring, they, they're, yeah, he'll be missed.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
With that being said, commissioners, I just wanna let you all know, we, we shorthanded in Parks and Rec with Michael leaving. Mr. Graveswall, he's out from surgery. I don't know when he'll be back, so that's two down. I did a little shift then from Animal Control and Solid Waste to try to help out. Again, Albert Floyd, Animal Control is in, I moved him to Parks and Rec. He's well qualified on line in the fields also. And also in Solid Waste, I'm one short from a man. He's out on surgery also. So, with all the shortage, I, I would like to, to see if the board will allow me to, to hire some felons. I have a lot of applications where people have prior felons, and I know what the rule says. It, it states that, you know, if you convicted while you're on the job, then, yes, there's ground for dismissal, but it says nothing about hiring someone who has a prior felony. And we all know that people who gains a felony at some time in their lifetime, that'd be years ago, and it's something that's holding, holding them back. And there are some good employees out there. I just, if the board would just consider that.
I perceive that was a legal question, so you're, you're up.
It is. Hearing this for the first time, so I would like the board table request, let me check with our labor attorney, then report back to the board on this question. Some first times come up.
Will we be able to do that by the next meeting?
I'm available. I'm not sure what, what matters.
Okay.
We should be able to do that by the next meeting. We got two weeks from our hand, unless he's out of the country. If he's holidaying, so he's a lot easier.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, just so everybody know, 'cause, you know, we can't talk about this behind closed doors, I, I think everybody deserves a second chance. And as long as you vet them really well, and it's legal and everything's okay, then I don't have a problem with doing that. As long as you vet them and make sure that, you know, they're gonna do a good job. I mean, I think everybody deserves a second chance, personally.
Sometimes some people don't get a second chance. That, that's the thing about, but they need a second chance.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I got a question. So, so what you're saying is, is right now, county policy is, is if you have a felony charge, prior charge, what, whatnot, you can't be employed with the county? I thought that was just specific if you was inmate supervisor of an inmate, so to speak.
Yeah, I researched the policy commission. I, you're right, I hadn't found where you can, but again, that's where DOC kinda had the thumb on us. It, you know, being a requirement that you be certified, non-D.C., one of the requirements when you hire, just like with the CDL license. Again, if we don't hire that person as an inmate supervisor, yeah, I don't see where it should be a problem.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, in the meantime, until we get an answer to that, maybe you wanna try to get in touch with Ms. Columbo, Diane, a career source, and see if they have any temporary employees or somebody you can have, so you can have boots on the ground. That'll help until we get an answer to this. You know what I mean? Because I think they're always trying to help people find jobs and help them be placed in jobs. If it is temporary, it still would be a help and a benefit to have extra bodies.
Yes, I'll do it.
Is there anything else, Mr. Davis?
Uh, I just wanna let you all know that the ramp at Oaklottney got twisted during the storm, so we're, we're in the process of trying to get it repaired.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Davis. We appreciate it.
I got one thing. Um, you gonna be my reminder. Give me a call. If I don't call, you call me. I got something to run by you. But real quick, I'm just curious about something. The boat ramp on the island, down there by the bridge, is that, that state, or is that, is that ours?
It's ours.
It's ours.
What, what's, I heard, now I've heard rumors. Is it gone? What, I heard there was some?
No, it washed out. We just repaired it about six months ago.
Okay.
The road, the road has been reopened.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's just the access road?
It is. Yep, yep, and, and the road department actually dropped some mild asphalt and actually patched the hole, so it is accessible now. It's just unfortunate that we had just repaired that. Yeah.
Yes, and didn't even really get the storm here.
Mr. Chairman, I got something from Mr. Davis. Vermin Park looks great. You guys did a phenomenal job. It's got the new plan and the equipment. The mulch has been out, uh, the, been placed. It looks really good. I saw some little kids out there playing the other day. It's, I appreciate everything that your crew did to get that up and going, looking good. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Ms. Erin, are we gonna open some, some bids or RFQs or something this morning for other stuff that we're?
Uh, we are, yep. We're actually doing the drainage improvements for the two front fields.
Okay, is that time-specific? Okay, we open them now while Mr. Davis is here?
Oh, I suppose so.
Oh, no, you know, our bids are not, we just, I usually do them when Erin does it, but.
Close. It's under his purview.
You only have one bid.
Yeah, yeah, and we did have four contractors show up to the mandatory pre-bid conference, but today we only have received one bid for the project, so. Sounds like the pole barns. Yeah. And this bid is from North Florida Construction, located in Clarksville, Florida. Okay, and the total base bid is one hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Again, one hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. And the bid bond is attached. What's our, women on that? What's the? Uh, they will be close, but I, I think that we can make this happen. But, you know, I do need a motion from you all to actually release this bid to DuBury Engineers for their review and recommendation. But I feel like we can make this one fit.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's your name, Ms. Ford.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, while we're on the subject, as you know, last meeting, we opened up bids for a pole barn that exceeded the bid, the bid amount. I've reached out to several people, Chip Lee, some other pole barn people. Some people don't do business in Franklin County. The problem that we're finding is they will sell you a pole barn, but they won't put it up. So, I talked to Erin about it this morning, and I'm still waiting. I sent some bid specs to another contractor. I've yet to hear back. So, we may get to the point where we may need to just buy a pole barn and do it ourselves. I mean, I don't mind going out there and digging a hole. I mean, to get stuff done, so what we have to do is what we have to do. I feel like that might be our only option. I've got one more person I'm gonna reach out to today that I got over the weekend, a contact person. I didn't call them because it was at the weekend and holiday weekend at that, so I'll reach out to them today, but, but that may be something that we may need to look at doing. I'm sure there's a lot of baseball folks out there that'll help us put a pole barn up, or we can just hire a contractor to do it. I don't know what the, the requirement will be on that, but just giving you guys a heads up, that might be what we have to do moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, has anybody, I, I tell you what, we need to talk to the school. They put that pole barn up some years back. It's a back gauge. I'm wondering who they went with over there. I mean, I'd just grab a name, so to speak.
Like, we can reach out to the superintendent, see if he can give us any information. It might be the same person I got the contact over the weekend. It might be the same person. I'm not sure. But we can certainly do that, yeah.
And we got, we've got local pole barn contractors and stuff. We need to tap them and see, you know, if, if they're interested. I don't know if it's a licensing or whatnot issue, but I mean, if we're gonna put it up ourselves, obviously, we don't have a license for that, but.
Yeah, we did receive one, actually one quote when we went out to bid for the project, which was more than our budgeted value, but the company that had actually given us the formal written estimate didn't turn in a bid, so, you know, that's also a challenge. When we go through the bid process, like, you know, sometimes people are interested in just, you know, giving you a quote, but they're not really interested if they have to compete with others, so.
Well, and that may be a good reason to go ahead and start trying to do it locally. If we can do it locally and, and start doing that, we can get things done more, because sometimes these companies just, you know, they got a hundred and eighty-day period of time to do it in. If you're like, these two women that sits on this pole, we like the thing done right then. That's the way we're supposed to be, you know?
But we do have the local, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the bid policy that we have does go to the local people first, right? They have an option to?
Nope, nope, that is actually not allowed by Florida statute, so, yeah, no, we cannot do that, no. No, and a lot of our grant programs do require us to go out to bid, so that was one reason as well. And our bid policy is currently from 10,000 to 25,000, we can actually solicit three written quotes from vendors. But anything, you know, more than 25,000, we actually have to go to formal bid. So granted, the one quote that we did receive, you know, straight from the manufacturer, was about 17,000, and that was kind of what we used to formulate the budget, but then they did not respond, but we haven't been successful in getting two other written quotes to be able to say, hey, come do it. You know, so it's definitely a challenge.
It's difficult, then again, what the law requires.
Commissioners, your Emergency Management Director just signaled me that they also put up a pole barn, so you might want to have her look at some of her information and see what contacts she has for you also.
If you don't mind, I'll get with you, I've got an idea to get around that.
Okay.
I have an idea too.
Anything else for Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you all.
Mr. Jennifer Daniels, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two action items today. One is, I'd like to request the Board, the Board's retroactive approval of our local state of emergency that was dated Monday, August 28th.
Pleasure, the Board.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amson, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your names.
My second action item is, I would like to request the Board's approval of an emergency contract for 30 days with the Summit Group Consulting LLC for assistance with PA claims for Hurricane Adalia. And I have a, I have an approved contract now from my attorney.
All right.
Explain a little bit, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, explain a little bit, Jenny, why you want to do this, so the public will know.
One of the main reasons we want to do this is, one, the state FDM is going with a new program called AFROC, okay? And AFROC basically gives you a score, which helps decide how much money our county is getting back in, upfront, with any kind of damages. Second of all, I'd need a PA contractor, because they're more up to date on all of the rules and laws and everything with FEMA. And third, I already have an RFP out right now for a contractor to do exactly this. But I'm in the, right now in the advertising and waiting for bids to come in process, so I don't have my contractor yet. I should be able to have my contractor by the end of September. And so this would just be someone to do what I need done until my contract is, my RFP is finished, and we formally select that contractor at that point.
Yes.
Did I miss something?
What I, you and I have discussed is the reimbursable nature of this contract, would you explain to the Board that issue?
Yes. What we're going to do is, with this contractor, they, any hours they bill, we will request for reimbursement through the management cost, CAT-Z, on FEMA reimbursement, that is our intent.
Sounds good.
I make a motion, if there's nobody, I make a motion to approve this, because she needs to get it going.
I'm sorry.
So a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything from Ms. Sanders?
Mr. Chairman, just thank you for your storm preparedness with Adalia. Thankfully, we didn't get too much damage, I think we had more damage from the rains after the fact. But thank you to you and your staff for keeping us all updated and informed and having a storm ready, as Commissioner Lockley would say.
Well, thank you, I want to say thank you to you all for being so active with me at the EOC. I think that was, that is one of the reasons we were able to pull it off, is we had so much of a collaboration with y'all, and our cert teams, and I mean, just everything came together, it was perfect, it was wonderful, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, the number for the pole barn, if you could give it to either, you want to give it to Erin or me? I'll make a phone call, it don't matter.
Yes, ma'am, I actually have our quote from when ours went up.
Okay.
It's a couple of years old, but I think it was around $11,000, but I don't know if that's the size or what you're looking for, but I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
But, Ms. Jenny, before you leave, I want to publicly thank you for the job that you did in the first storm since you've become our EOC Director.
First ones on our bill.
First, you can say what they want to, we were being just as prepared and just as active as it was coming toward, as if it was coming toward us. And I'll be honest with you, going into the night, that night, I was second guessing whether they'd been telling us right the whole time, but they'd consistently been saying it was going to turn to the east, and that's what we based all of our decisions on and our discussions that we had. And I will say that it was a very collaborative effort. There was one message during this whole storm, and it was tremendous, thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, every time she called me, I said, Keaton Beach, Keaton Beach. I said, it's not going to hit here, it's going to Keaton Beach. I mean, but she said, how did you know that? When you look at storms long enough, I'm just, I'm just glad that it didn't, you know?
Yes.
I'm sorry for all the devastation they got over and up. I mean, I've never, I said, I just told Commissioner Ward earlier, seeing that area up in there, that it's hit, it reminds me of Hurricane Michael.
Yes.
And, but it was just in a less denser population, which was a good thing, you know? But anyway, Jenny, you did good, I'm glad.
Yep, and, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, my phone went off Saturday morning, I'm like, it was her, I'm like, why is she calling? Hurricane's not going to let. Hey, it's letting us know about the flooding that we had after the fact.
Survived the hurricane, now we're going to float away.
And that was on Saturday, so 24/7 job.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't get a day off, so, thank you to you and your staff.
It was not good, Saturday morning, the residents of St. George Island woke up to water about three foot deep, two or three foot deep, on all their roadways. And I'm like, especially on the center, it was pretty mad, it really was.
That stormwater drainage can't come soon enough.
Can't come soon enough, you're right about that.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I do got some pictures I'll forward you that you asked for, so I'll send those to you at some point in time, maybe, if not today, tomorrow for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders, appreciate all you do. All right, Ms. Virginia, coming up for Mr. DeWitt Polis, mosquito control.
Good morning, Commissioners. Standing in for Director Polis, he had a death in his family this morning, guys. He has one action item on his report.
So this is basically just taking the?
Yeah, from a one to a two.
Mr. Tucker from a four to a five, or something like that? Upgrade four to five?
Yes.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, I guess this is kind of the same thing as what Mr. Davis was talking about?
Yes.
With the, with the number, so we're going to do the same for this, these individuals as well, right? Or this individual?
You're talking about Howard?
Yeah.
Yes. Anyone have anything from Ms. Virginia additional to what was on the report?
I will say that after Hurricane Adalia, we're having to actually larva side a little bit more, trying to get, you know, get ahead of and get in control of the mosquito population before it becomes like really, really bad with all this flooding.
Yes.
We've also got our sprayers out spraying a little bit more heavily than normal, just so we can try to get ahead of the game.
Okay.
Other than that, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thanks.
Appreciate everything you all do. Mr. Eric Lovestran, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
I didn't have any action items for the Board in my report today.
Commissioners, do you guys have any questions or concerns for Mr. Neighbors? No, Mr. Neighbors, shoot, Mr. Eric.
I'm sure Mr. Neighbors can answer.
I'm lost up here, sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Eric, thank you for everything you all do, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too. Up next, Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Franklin County Public Library, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just want to take a quick moment to remind everyone that September is National Library Card Month. So just a reminder that a library card comes at no cost to Franklin County residents, and they get access to a wealth of resources. So we'll really be promoting those library resources this month, we'll be teaching classes on all the digital tools that you get with your library card, so we really encourage everyone to come out this month and get a library card. My only action item for you today is a request for signatures for our Florida Department of State, Division of Library and Information Services State Aid to Libraries Grant Application. This is an annual grant we apply for every year with the state. The grant is, you know, to help libraries out with their operating expenses for the year.
So move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amson, any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And that's all I have for you today.
Ms. Whitney, I was, I thought it very interesting, I'm glad you brought this up about the library card signup. I was looking just to look, a couple of weekends ago, I was amazed at how much you can do with a library card, even without going to the library.
Yeah, and we add new stuff every year.
Yes.
So that, you know, those tools grow every year.
It is not a small amount of stuff that's available to you with a library card.
Yeah, and that's the big hurdle, is just educating everyone on all the tools and resources.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for everything you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ted Muscilla, I think is appearing by Zoom.
Yes, he is, he's under the weather, so he is on the line.
Mr. Ted's never under the weather.
Okay.
And he always is here, so.
Kind of like Chuck Norris, huh? So, okay, Ted, if you would, on mute, you can go ahead, your device is still muted. And maybe he walked away, so while we're waiting for Ted, Commissioners, if you go to my report, which is on, let's take care of a couple of things here while we're waiting for Ted. Just wanted to get into my own report.
Page 28.
Yep, page 28, let's do item number one. Task in my report is FAA-funded $800,000 task order, it's number 11 for the airport apron rehab. Actually, rather than reading it all, I'll just ask Mr. John Collins to step on up to the podium and discuss this task order with the Board.
Thank you, Michael, good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Collins with the AVCON. So what we're proposing here is, the county currently has an $800,000 grant. It's the last piece of the apron rehabilitation project that's been ongoing for a couple of years now. We've already completed two different phases, and it's the last piece. And the whole point here is that we're trying to maintain our pavement, that was all constructed during World War II, so that we, at some point, doesn't degrade to the point where you have to completely reconstruct it. You need to maintain it, keep it in good shape before, you know, it really falls apart. And so the goal here is, number one, is to repair any kind of failed pavement. If there's potholes, if there's cracked slabs, if there's anything to the point where you need to replace it, we'll do that first. And then we will kind of rehabilitate or maintain the rest of the pavement that's out there right now. And lastly, if there's enough money remaining, we've had some discussions with the airport manager, and the existing tie-downs on the apron, they're not very efficient. In the springtime, in the summertime, when things get really busy at the airport, the airport does run out of tie-down space. And it's just because it's just one line of airplanes along the edge of the pavement. And actually, if you, if you do tie down airplanes in each of these locations, you're blocking access to hangars that are adjacent to the apron. And so as part of the project, we're going to develop a more optimal parking layout for your aircraft on your east apron, and construct all new tie-downs. My guess at this point is we could probably increase the capacity by four or five times on the apron if we do create rows of parking and create a better layout, so that's all part of this project.
Mr. Ted, back online yet?
Yes, he's unmuted now, but if you want to, did you want to finish?
Yeah, we can, I just was checking, make sure he was there.
And I'll add this as well, I did have a discussion with Commissioner Amson this morning, I'm going to, as soon as we're done here today, I'm going to head over and take a look at those couple of areas that you mentioned today, and make sure we got a good, good understanding of what's happening out there.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for y'all what it was, I was asking him, because I went out this morning and met with Ted. We have some areas out there at the airport where we have actual collapsing concrete. I just wanted to focus, make sure we were focusing on that, instead of areas that have surface cracks. We need to prioritize this in a way, and work towards, you know, get the main stuff done first, that we actually have structural damage, and then work to give it a facelift, so to speak. So, and that's all, it was just clarifying to them, because this is the only time I can get to the top of them, so.
So that's what this is addressing?
Yeah, that's what this is there for.
Very good.
And I wanted also to let the public know that have interest out there, that that's where we need to shift this, is priority-wise, is spend this money on the worst stuff first, and then work on the stuff that's just really cosmetic, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Right, so pleasure, the Board.
So move.
Second.
So a motion to approve by Commissioner Amson, second by Commissioner Ward, any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? That's your names.
Thank you.
Do we have anything to discuss with Mr. Ted?
His report, if you'd like, I have another item, but we could get to Ted.
Mr. Ted?
I'm on here now, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, and I'm sorry I'm not there, I do have apparently COVID again, so I'm saying in as much as possible. And is there anything that you have, the report that I sent in, do you have anything you would like to ask me about it?
Commissioners, you have any questions about the report Mr. Ted sent? I'm good with it, I will say, Mr. Ted, while you're here, because it has to do with where you're at, so we had our meeting with Triumph the other day, and talked a lot about the airport and things we're trying to do. Still kind of not as smooth as I would want it to be. They wanted to talk about the airport, but they didn't want to, they didn't want to commit to what they're going to help us try to obtain at the airport. It's kind of a, Commissioners, it's kind of a different situation, because, you know, we're just trying to talk through it, but they're, you know, wanting us to throw out ideas at them, and we do, and they don't want to commit. They're willing to tell us no, or say, well, maybe, but we don't want to commit to it. Well, it's kind of hard to, as a governmental body, it's kind of hard to push anything forward when you don't have a committal of the finances that's going to get it done. That's, we do what we can do, we're doing what we're doing with the apron, because we have the grant and the finances to do it. And when you don't have the finances to back you to actually do something, well, that's a great idea, but it's not going very far. So I just want to make sure and mention to you, Mr. Ted, while you're here, since you are interim airport manager, we did talk extensively about the airport, and our different possibilities, and our different things that we have out there that look really good. Now, one thing that did come positively out of the discussion, and they, but again, they don't want to fully commit to it yet, is Triumph staff said that they have started having discussion, and they think that their Board is backing it about the possibility to use Triumph funds to build spec buildings, which would be a great improvement from where we've been before with the airport. Because, just to make sure the public is aware of what we're discussing, we're discussing Triumph dollars, which is available because of the oil spill, what is it, 12 years ago now? And there's money set aside for all the counties that were impacted, we were one of them, but there's statutory requirements of what we have to do to get that money. It has to create so many jobs, or, you know, different, different levels of things it has to do. When in a small rural area, we're not going to create 100 jobs like it will in Bay County, which doesn't ever happen. But if we have the opportunity to start building some spec buildings, we might can get some companies to lease those buildings. But that's a problem we've been having back and forth, is we don't have anybody on the hook for a building that doesn't exist, which is what they want, and we don't have a building, so we can't get someone on the hook, which is what we want. Go ahead, Mr. Ted.
Yes, you nailed it on the head.
Yes, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that, sir. That's why I brought it up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And what I think, Mr. Ted?
And I concur with Commissioner Amerson about the apron out there, so.
We're going to get that done. We've already voted on that. Thank you, Mr. Ted, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Before we switch to presentation, sir, let's take a five-minute recess.
Oh, I, I do have another airport item, but.
What you got?
Quickly. At a previous meeting, the board signed a new FBO lease for the airport, a benefit of that lease or funds to hire a full-time maintenance employee. This position's starting salary will be $34,000 per year plus benefits, Aaron?
Thirty-four? Yes.
Thirty-four plus benefits. Commissioner Amerson would like the board to authorize advertising for this position, so a candidate would be in place effective October 1, or as close to that date as possible. Will the board advertise this as an in-house ad before advertising publicly? We have done that. We've done both at the same time. It's, it's your discretion. I just need action to authorize advertising for this new full-time position at the county airport.
Well, if you're trying to do it as soon as you can get it in place, I think you'd want to do both at the same time.
Works and meet, Commissioner.
Is what I think, but I'm one of four that doesn't want to.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. And we're advertising both at the same time? Is that Commissioner Ward? All right, just clarifying the motion. Any discussion on the motion before we vote?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I thought Mr. Ted was the maintenance guy.
Well, we're trying to change that.
I know, I know, it's a joke, it's a joke. Poor Mr. Ted.
Yes.
Not, it's a weird job. All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
And before, Commissioners, I know you're going to go on a break. You're going to see a young lady. Where did she go? Taking pictures? She's, it's for something personal that she's doing, things. I just, don't, don't be worried. We're not, yeah, we're not in trouble with anyone. Oh, yeah, you need to, I'll make sure she gets your best side, Commissioner Amerson.
All right, well, let's take a five-minute recess. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We will go to, next to some of our presentations. I think we have Mr. Mark Holton from Evergreen on the line.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We hear you fine.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
If I'm ready to go ahead and jump in, I can go ahead and start if there was any introduction that needed before I go.
No, I think we're good. Go ahead.
All right, perfect. Well, then, if you'll allow me to share my screen, I did.
Give me a second.
I did, go ahead.
One second.
Thank you. I got a couple of slides here.
Hold on, sir. Okay, Mark, you should be able to share now.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, there we go.
And it says, is it showing up on there for you now?
Yep, yes, sir.
Perfect. So I put together just a couple of slides to talk about two different things that were, were brought to me by your county coordinator and by Aaron as well. And so what I've got today is to talk about really merit pay as well as supplemental pays. And again, it's, it's just some really brief things that I put on here that I wanted us to be able to talk about. Really talk about why you would want to use a merit pay system, what are the benefits, and then how would you go and implement that same thing with supplemental pays? So what are the objectives of supplemental pays? What are some examples, just to make sure everybody's on the same page? What are some benefits of a supplemental pay system? And then again, some of the implementation considerations and next steps. So when we talk about merit pay, just so that everybody, again, is on the same page and we're clear here. Merit pay, you know, it does have a few different things, a few different reasons, rather than you really want to institute a strong merit pay system. One of those is to make sure you can reward performance and hard work. Obviously, if you have a system that's not based on merit, if it's just based on tenure or if it's based on some other qualification, it may or may not be able to differentiate as well between the employees who are actually giving their all, who are, who are just showing up versus the employees who are trying to go above and beyond. And so being able to have an actual tool that you can say to your employees that, hey, if you work better, if you work harder, if you do a better job, we're going to be able to pay you more. That's a very, very strong incentive. It can be something that can help you attract and retain talent as well. So if somebody's coming in and they're saying, well, hey, what does the pay range look like? And what am I going to be paid? If you're able to tell that employee, look, if you work harder, you're going to be paid more, and here's the way our system's implemented. Them being able to hear about that and understand the merit system in place can absolutely be attractive to, to bring in people. As well, again, with your, your top talent, those employees who you feel are highest performing currently, they'll be able to get some additional raises, which would help you to retain those employees. It does also encourage potentially skill development or, again, performance development, depending on what you're actually, you know, using as your criteria for your merit systems. Obviously, if you're telling somebody, hey, we may pay you more if you're able to get, you know, this skill or able to work on that area of yourself professionally, it's something that employees would want to do. And then fostering a culture of accountability and results. Again, if an employee knows, if I show up and don't do as good of a job, I'm not going to get as big of a raise. If I know that, hey, I'm going to be paid not just because I have, you know, an extra year of experience or tenure here, but because I got results in my area. Definitely that culture is a, a strong factor in the merit pay as well. So the benefits really tie into the exact same reasons that you want to do that is, it can help motivate employees like we talked about. If they know there's something at stake besides just showing up, it definitely can help motivate those employees for improved, you know, can motivate them for that improved performance. It can help you deliver better quality public services. So again, the citizens may start to actually recognize and realize that the gains and the results from that, because as you have employees who are motivated to perform their jobs better, that, that necessarily translates into customer service and into increased services and more efficient services, again, if the system is implemented correctly. The greater efficiency and productivity both tie in as well in the exact same way, that if you've got people who are trying to work hard to get the, those, you know, bigger raises, that can certainly increase the productivity and efficiency even to, to offset the additional raises that you get. You certainly can get more productivity out of employees with a, a system like this. And then the positive public perception is something that can be factored in as well. Certainly, if you're able to market and say, look, we're, we're being as efficient and as responsible towards as we can of the public dollars, can definitely be something that can have that public perception that, that is positive as well. So with the supplemental pays, there are some similarities, but certainly some differences as well. So the supplemental pays, of course, they can help ensure competitiveness in the job market. So there are an increasing number of other employers who are offering supplemental pays currently. And so if you're looking, you know, if you've got somebody, maybe they're living, you know, sort of, you know, let's say near the Tallahassee metro area, maybe they're, they're south of Tallahassee, maybe in Waukatah County, and they're, they're looking at a few different jobs, looking south, looking north, and they're saying, where should I go? If they see they can get, you know, supplemental pay, if they go somewhere else, they may say, well, no, I don't want to go to Franklin County. I've got this valuable certification. But if they're not going to pay me for it, they may not feel the need to, to come to Franklin County. County. But instead, they choose somewhere else, and they choose to drive a different direction. You can address local needs. So again, if there is a particular need, this is a very, very common one that we see, which is why we use the example, but if you have a specific local need, such as some markets, they have a very high demand for bilingual public servants because they have a high Spanish-speaking population, and they may say, hey, we need to offer a supplemental pay to try to encourage people to work here who have that skill, or to try to encourage people to develop that skill in order to meet the public need. Lastly, if you do have a very specialized skill set, a CDL is a great example recently. Again, CDLs are extremely competitive in the market right now, and so some organizations say, hey, we really want to make sure that if you have that specialized skill or specialized certification, that we're able to compensate for that. Depending on how the system is implemented, you may have two people working in the same job, maybe you've got two different maintenance workers, one of them has a CDL and one of them does not. It may not be required for the job, but it may be very helpful. It may be something that, hey, because this person has this skill, they're actually able to, you know, perform different duties or go above and beyond in some ways. And so you may choose to have that CDL in place for those, you know, certain individuals. Again, that's something that would need to be worked out in policy, whether or not you're going to allow certain jobs to, you know, be qualified to receive special pay, because obviously, as a, you know, kind of silly example, you wouldn't want to pay your county coordinator because he had a CDL, because it's not going to be useful to him in that role, but you may have some people in other departments that it would be extremely useful for them to have that. So just as some examples, again, to make sure we're all looking at the same thing or sort of talking about the same thing for supplemental pays, CDLs and bilingual pay, those are really two of the main ones that we see across the country that are a little bit hot right now. You see organizations adding these, you see people looking at these pays. Shift differentials is a very popular one, certainly in public safety, but also in the trades. Shift differentials are things that people look at that, hey, I think we even heard it mentioned earlier in this meeting, that, you know, when a hurricane comes through, some people are having to work, some people are having to come in at night, make, you know, make repairs, work on things. Again, a shift differential is an excellent way to be able to compensate those employees and reward them for that additional factor that most people wouldn't have. Educational incentives, on-call pays, longevity pays, these are three other ones. Again, you see them in organizations across the country, not everybody has them. Something like a longevity pay I'll specifically mention, you've already got a system in place currently that rewards longevity with your current pay structure. You can move people through the ranges from minimum to maximum to account for longevity. So you may not need as much to go with longevity pay, but if you choose instead to go with a merit system, you could actually have a longevity pay that would provide some small adjustment for longevity. We do still want to reward typically people for their longevity, but at the same time, the main driver of the pay could be merit. And so again, if you instituted a longevity pay along with a merit system, that would be a way for the county to really put the dollars where you believe it's most appropriate, most important, while still recognizing to a degree the longevity of employees. The benefits of supplemental pays, again, it can definitely keep you more competitive with the private sector as well as with the public sector. Again, you know, in recent years, you're starting to see more and more of this in the public sector. It used to be more of a private thing, but it definitely can keep you more competitive. It can encourage employees to obtain and maintain specialized skills. So as we mentioned, if there's a certain skill that you feel is critical, that you really need employees to have, you're able to pay for those skills specifically. So if you add a supplemental pay for a CDL, for bilingual pay, even maybe not a skill, but maybe more of availability, or maybe more of commitment and dedication. So if you say, hey, for those employees working the night shifts, or for those employees who are willing to go into hazardous situations, you can offer a supplemental pay for those to encourage that. And then again, once again, it allows you to target your money more effectively. You don't have to raise the pay for every single person in the maintenance or solid waste, you know, department, but you instead can spend the money on the areas that are most competitive, and you can more accurately target where those dollars need to go. So again, it is a little bit more efficient, ensures a better stewardship of that money that you'll have. So with implementation considerations, I definitely want to mention a couple of things that are critical to keep in mind for both merit as well as supplemental pay systems. No matter what you do, it will require regular review, and you do need to adjust the pay scales, the supplemental pay amounts, the merit system amounts, how much you're giving for merit, et cetera, based on market trends and based on competitiveness. So again, we could put in the best system in place today, you know, you have the best, most current, absolutely perfect system right now, but if you don't look at it or adjust it or keep an eye on that, in two, three, four, five years, again, it's going to go out of date. So you definitely want to keep an eye on this system over time. You know, one of the important considerations as well is ensuring transparency, so making sure that employees understand exactly what the system is looking for, particularly with merit, because that can be a little bit more subjective. Typically, if we say, hey, you get paid for a CDL if you're in these jobs, that can be pretty transparent in and of itself. But with merit, you have to have a transparent system so that employees don't leave their merit view thinking, well, that doesn't make sense, I don't understand, I thought I would get this, but instead I got that. You want to make sure they understand and can very clearly lay out, here's what you've done well, here's what you've not done as well. And then lastly, providing training and resources for employees to upgrade their skills and improve their performance. So if you're going to have these systems in place, it needs to be considered whether or not, if an employee goes and pays for a certification, is the county going to bear some of that cost if it's a certification you want employees to get? Does the extra pay for the certification, is that the payment that the employee would get, and therefore, they have to pay for their own certifications? Once again, with performance, providing training and resources to employees, if an employee comes to their supervisor and says, hey, my performance score, my merit score was low this year, and I'd like to improve that, what can I do to improve my merit score next year? Again, there should be an answer, there should be a very clearly defined system that says, hey, here's where you're deficient, and here's what you need to work on and improve for next year. So making sure the transparency, the regular reviews, and then that training aspect is there for employees as well. Those are three of your very key considerations for implementing either a merit system or a supplemental pay program. So the first two bullets on this slide that are a little bit of summary, again, just to kind of mention at a high level why it's important, the last two are more practical next steps here. So with a holistic reward system, again, both merit as well as supplemental, you're really trying to target the pays where they're supposed to be. You're not just paying people for tenure, you're not just paying people for showing up, but it's a way of dedicating your dollars to the areas where they are most effective and most efficient. Then motivation and equity, both are impacted by both systems, because if you tell people, if you get this certification, if you work hard, if you perform at a higher level, then you will get more pay, that can be a very strong motivating factor for employees, and it's a more fair system overall. I think everybody recognizes that not everybody is equal, either in terms of skill, but also in terms of just the dedication to the job and how hard people are willing to work. So if you are able to put in a system in place that recognizes those factors, that's where you can increase the equity, because you do give the increases to the people who most deserve them. You're able to retain the people who most, who you would most want to keep. And then again, for somebody who just shows up, they're still going to get their pay, they've done their job, but they maybe don't have to be paid above and beyond where everybody else is. So with the merit system and supplemental pays, we have proposed and spoken, you know, with the, a couple of your representatives, about how we can implement this system and what we can help out, what we can assist with. So with a merit system, we can create, implement, and maintain an online tool that will help the county track your merit systems over time. We will update the tool, we will add customizations as needed and upgrades. Again, basic customizations or upgrades are included in this price, so a price of $9,500 annually. That includes all basic customizations as well as software updates that we do. If the county desires any more advanced customizations, if they say, no, we want to go a completely different direction or scrap something, again, we'll work with you on that as well as as time goes forward. But this $9,500 would include setting up the system, recommending policies and procedures in conjunction with county leadership in terms of what are the, what are the areas and the aspects that you all would like to motivate for performance, and where would you like to actually attract things? And then again, providing training for your supervisors as well, to make sure they understand how to run the system, how they're supposed to score people, and actually how that would take place over time. With the supplemental pays, this can be significantly more varied, depending on how much depth and detail that you all would like us to go into. So we didn't want to give a price that would be too high based on, you know, if you were only interested in looking at a few supplemental pays, you know, we didn't want to price it too high for that. At the same time, we didn't want to feel like if we priced it too low, we'd have to say, no, we can't, you know, go back any further. So we've given an hourly price for the supplemental pays. You know, if the county would desire more specific, you know, pricing on that, we can certainly talk with your, you know, members, and again, we're very, very comfortable working with both Aaron and Michael over time. So if they would like to reach out, hey, these are the specific pays that we want, we want you to give recommendations on those, we can price it out. But right now, it gives you a lot of flexibility, that we could start that off looking at a few supplemental pays that are important. If you wanted to add any on at the time, again, very, very happy to do that and look at whatever you'd like us to review and make recommendations on. So that's the information that I wanted to share today. Again, really wanted to get into the high level of why are we looking at performance systems, why would we look at merit, why would we look at supplemental pays? But I'm more than happy to address any questions that anybody has as well.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one. Mr. Holcomb, this is Jessica Ward, District Five. You mentioned something about the on-call pay. Can you give us any kind of idea or indication of what other counties comparable to us do in terms of their on-call pay? Can you share that information, or is that proprietary?
No, I can share information in general. I don't know off the top of my head what your direct peers are doing, because that's something we would actually have to survey and collect. What I can tell you, because we actually just did a survey like this from an organization in, I guess it was in Kansas, so it's not your direct peers, but it's the exact same question they asked, is what do we do about supplemental pays? And for everybody else in the room who's asking about, so for an on-call pay, you know, why would we do that, or what would we want to see? One of the concerns that is very common that you hear from people who are on-call is they'll say things like, well, if I'm on-call all weekend, that actually impacts my weekend plans, I can't go out of town, I wanted to go visit somebody, I can't, you know, go out to dinner with my wife and have a drink, and, you know, I can't drink anything because I might have to come in, you know, I can't do any of the things I would want to do, so I end up sitting at home, it's not fair if I'm not being paid for that. And so some of the things you will see, some organizations, the more generous, they'll actually pay a small hourly fee for every single hour you're on-call. So you'll see some organizations, they'll pay $2 an hour, $3 an hour for every hour you're on-call. Now again, that's not much per hour, but if it's the entire weekend, again, that turns into be, you know, a couple hundred dollars for that on-call pay. Sometimes, there's a more targeted pay where it just says, hey, if you do have to come in, you'll get paid a minimum of, you know, three hours' work. If you don't come in, we'll pay you one hour's work. You know, there'll be some smaller fee like that where they'll just say, look, we're going to recognize that you're on-call, we're going to give you some small number of hours that we're going to pay for, but when you do come in, you get paid extra at a minimum. So you get at least three hours' pay or something similar. So I don't think there's one consensus across the country. We certainly have data from other locations, but we would actually reach out and collect specifically from your peers to see if anything's being done. And if it's not, we can still absolutely recommend what we would consider a best practice on-call pay system, even if you would be the first one of your peers to do that. But those are some of the more common on-call pay systems that we've seen, is either that small hourly rate, or some sort of a set amount that, hey, if you're on-call, you get X number of dollars, you know, no matter what, and then if you come in, you get paid your hourly rate.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Mr. Holcomb, thank you for your presentation. This is Ricky Jones, District One. I want to ask a question, the two different schedules you presented us this morning, merit and/or supplemental, they are and/or or, or this one or that one? You know what I mean? Are they, people doing conjunction, you know, both, or most people just do one or the other? I guess is what I'm trying to find out.
So they definitely do not have to be done together. They do work well in tandem, because again, if the county were to say, you know, as a dedicated philosophy, we would like to be more efficient and more dedicated to the way we're spending our dollars, then the statement we would make is, you really have two options there, is merit and supplemental pays. Those are the two most straightforward ways that you can be more targeted with where your money goes. You do not have to do both at once, though. You could say, we'd like to start with the merit, and then maybe we look at supplemental pays later. At the same time, you do see many organizations across the country who have a rather robust supplemental pay system, but they say, no, we don't want to do merit for whatever reason. The biggest holdup on merit is typically just the training of all supervisors and managers and directors across the county, and making sure that it's administered consistently. That's the biggest problem that we see, because if you do a merit system, but you don't do it right, if your supervisors are not being basically reviewed and trained and instructed on how to implement the system, you do run the risk that certain supervisors are more generous than others, and you end up negatively impacting people. So that's the reason why you see some people who don't want to do merit. If you do the system right, I don't think there's any concern with that. But I guess an ultimate answer to the question is, I do not think you have to do both at the same time. You could select one or the other, but I think they work very well together if you would like to do both.
Okay. Well, one of the reasons I was asking to try to differentiate the two, as I'm thinking of the scenario where, and we faced it already a couple of times, in implementing this pay plan and trying to get us to remind the public and everybody where we're at, we instituted at the beginning of this pay plan, which was supposed to be in a one-year implementation. We spread it over the course of now what looks like it's going to be four years, if we pass our budget we have this year. That could wind up being a four-year deal instead of one, which was a stress, because we're trying to get to the $15 an hour minimum wage that the state of Florida voted in before that takes effect. That's what we're trying to do. But we're not just creating the same problems we've had in the past and compressing wages, we're moving everybody at the same time. So that's part of what we've been trying to accomplish. But we've already run into the scenario where I'm working at XYZ department, and ABC department's hiring somebody, but I want to take my level of pay and my years of service and go to another department, well, I'm getting to blow up that department's budget, because they don't have it budgeted to pay me $45,000, they have it budgeted to pay me $30,000. So I mean, is there any way to address those kind of issues, and is one of these better at addressing that than the other?
Well, in terms of that specific issue of people moving between departments, the only way this would potentially address that all, which I don't think either of these would directly focus on that, but the only way that one of these would, you know, sort of affect one of those would be the supplemental pays, if your different departments allowed people to qualify for different supplemental pays. So for example, you know, if somebody has a CDL in one department, and they move departments, and the other department does not recognize that a CDL would be beneficial for them, that they maybe say, no, we don't need that in our department, but the other department does, you would potentially see a lower pay, because the person would be choosing to go without their CDL differential pay. Now, that probably means that the employee would be less likely to take the job, you know, more than likely if they were losing pay, they may decide to stay put. So it could potentially help a little, but I don't think that would be a huge difference there, because typically, if you had two similar positions, you probably want them to have similar qualifications. Now, it may be that one department needs a certification, the other doesn't, that could be a differentiating factor, but I wouldn't think this would be a huge change either way. That is, it's something we've heard of elsewhere, and certainly an issue we see some, you know, from time to time with our clients, where they say, hey, we're doing some what they'll call internal poaching, where we're taking people from one department from another. Certainly, it's in a way preferable to losing people to an outside organization, at least they aren't still working with the county, but it absolutely has its concerned, you know, concerns of the zones, as you've mentioned, keeping the budget straight between departments, having to retrain, losing that productivity when somebody goes from one to the other, there's still that training period, and then you filled one vacancy but created another, so you're still right back in that hiring cycle. But unfortunately, I would say, I don't think either of these avenues would correct or fix that problem just by themselves.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anybody else having questions? I do have more, but I was trying to defer.
One more question, sir. So I know we have in the past looked at, we probably didn't know the correct terminology, but we've looked a lot at some of the stuff to do with supplemental pay. We have had discussions about on-call pay and how to implement that, and what's fair to the county and to the employee and to the public, because it's public dollars we're using here. I do like what you presented this morning, for me personally, because I know we're still...
because I know we're still, again, if we pass the budget as it is currently, we're still a full year away from finalizing our implementation of the pay plan that we set in. So I don't know that we'd, me personally, I don't know that we'd be able to do both at one time. But with the different things we've already talked about, I think the supplemental is something I'm definitely interested in because on-call pay, because educational incentive. So if you have people that are working, for instance, that are mechanic by nature and they've gotten any ASC certifications, I think they need to get something for that because they're going to perform their job better. They're going to be able to do better in the job they're in. Not that the ones we have, if they don't have them, aren't doing a good job, but the training does make a difference.
Right.
Same thing with shift differential. It's another issue we've had. Some of our departments are required to work weekends and our holidays. So something with shift differential, I, I think that's something that's important. I do think performance evaluations are, are great, but the only thing I've seen that that would be addressed in would be the merit system. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the, the performance evaluations would only be addressed with the merit system here. And the reason is, again, administering a performance system is not as simple as just recommending policies, putting it forward and going. You know, it's very straightforward. Does a mechanic have a certification? Yes or no? And then therefore, do we increase the pay? Yes or no? But when you talk about things like merit and performance, it's not as easy as saying, is this person a high performer or a low performer? Because sometimes there's some nuance. It, it's, you know, well, maybe yes, they're good in this area and bad in that area. Or maybe when you're comparing across departments, you have the supervisors who have the different opinions. So maybe this person's a little bit easier of a grader. So he says everybody's a high performer and somebody over here is a little bit more strict. So those are the kinds of things that need to be considered with the merit system. Uh, it definitely requires more oversight and more upkeep, um, on the county side. And that's why it's a little bit more involved in the process.
Okay. Well, is this something, uh, that we are looking to take in action on today?
No. So I wanted you guys to have this presentation today. Give it two weeks because I know you're going to walk away this afternoon and say, I got another question for Mark.
Oh, yeah.
Give you guys the ability to talk to Mark. Have questions and I will bring his proposal to you at the next meeting for your approval.
Okay.
That, that's, that's my intention unless the board wants to do something different.
I'm good with that.
Any thoughts? I mean, if y'all got any more questions now, I wasn't trying to cut it all off. We, this is what we're here for.
Yep.
You have questions to ask. The more questions you ask, the more we'll all know.
I don't have no questions, but, but he's hitting it right on at the merit.
Yes.
And all that, the differential area. We'll just see what can come up.
Well, ideally, in a perfect world, there's a lot of these things we need to implement because we've never implemented them before. So, you know, I don't know many jobs that don't have the supervisors doing evaluations on their employees. But, you know, we're not quite there yet. You know, we're working toward it. But I don't know many jobs that don't exist like that. Uh, just about anybody in the private sector for sure that gets moved up, they get moved up because somebody above them sees the job they're doing and says, you know what? We've been paying you $18 an hour, but you've been giving us $25 an hour worth of work. We think we need to give you a little bit more. That's kind of the way it works. So, uh, you know, I know that is the ultimate goal and we'll see where it goes. But I'm good with everything you presented, sir.
Well, thank you all very much for having me then. I appreciate it. Um, as, as was just shared, I'll be more than happy to address the other questions. So if you think of anything, let me know. And otherwise, we will, um, wait to hear back from you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Bye.
Mr. Chairman, I just heard, uh, from Robert. Unfortunately, he thought they could get away, he could get away from that storm cleanup because they've been called out. But he said it'll take him like three or four more days before they're back to their home base. So I'll, I'll, we've, I'm going to move into the next agenda for you.
Okay.
Okay?
We do still have a public comment under that item, though.
Yeah, yes. Um, and let me see here. I don't know if you want to defer the public comment until, um...
I don't know. They filled out a public comment card to speak today?
Okay, I will, um, unmute them. All right, Ms. Jordan is on mute.
Good morning. Good morning. Yes, I did hear, hear you that Robert is not available today to, to storm clean up. But I did have some things that I'm really hoping to get addressed, um, when, when, whenever this conversation does take place. The first one being, I'm certain when are we going to be up and running? I'm speaking not only on behalf of myself, but on my neighbors and for these volunteers, which we appreciate so greatly that they continue to hang in there as this has been 17, 18 months now since the May 5th of 2022, when it was decided to dissolve the fire department. But I'm really hoping to see a time certain of when we are going to be up and running. That's the one thing. The other is that, um, yesterday, the Florida State Fire Fighters Association put out a call. I sent it to you guys in an email. I don't know if you saw it or not. But they put out a call with an Amazon wishlist for the St. James Land Volunteer Fire Department, um, stating that we're, that they were taking classes to get certification, be medically certified. And on the list is things like oxygen, um, oxygen bags, first aid kits and safety, um, vests. And I was wondering why is that? Is something that like the MSBU monies should be being used for? And where are, are the MSBU monies accruing interest and what's being done with that interest? And how can that, will that gunna fit us at some, at some point? Right now, I live close enough to the fire department that all I have to do is stand out in the street and I can look right at it. And it's kind of been a ghost town. The only activity that I've seen has been a garbage can has been sitting out by, it was overflowing and it was sitting out for a week and a half with an igloo cooler, which is still sitting out by the road. And, um, that's about, that's about it. I don't want to lose our volunteers. No one wants to lose our volunteers. Please work to get us time certain of when we're going to be up and running as a fire department so people don't have to worry about their ISOs. That's my comment for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. And hopefully we'll be able to address some of that stuff when Mr. Amick is here.
I was...
That was the whole purpose of him being here.
Yes, exactly. Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's the point.
That's the reason why I asked the, the board to allow him to call in because I've got some serious concerns. This has been rocking on two, a little bit too long.
Yes.
But I'm not going into it today. I'll wait until he gets here where we can discuss it.
A few things. That's the point Commissioner Sanders had that she wanted to discuss with the same. And he's aware of it, I told him, you know? So he was prepared to answer and respond to follow whatever directives the board gave him, you know, which was, again, we'll do in two weeks from today. Um, in reference to the MSBU, I could have Erin look at the account, forward it to you. You'll see whatever interest has been, you know...
It, it's actually a clearing account. The MSBU fund is actually a clearing account, so there are no interest earnings, um, you know, in that fund. And this is a highly irregular situation, whereas the county is actually maintaining those funds. Typically, at the end of the year, we don't have anything left in that fund because you, we essentially transfer to them, uh, their distributions and we, we do a quarterly allocation and then there's a true-up at the end of the year. So everything that goes into that fund, we automatically distribute to the fire departments on a quarterly basis. So there are no interest earnings. Um, now, there is interest on the delinquencies, um, you know, which, that's those assessments that were actually prior to 2012 when they were included on, um, by a special assessment. So you will see a little bit of income there, you know, whenever a property sells that has one of those old liens attached to it, but there is no, um, interest earnings.
But they ordering up the truck and all that salary been done? And it's supposed to be delivered in November, right?
December or November?
Late November, early December.
Late November, December?
Yep. Um, because even when it's finished, they have to put the, the specific equipment that we ordered for it to have it there. So he said late November, I'm saying early December. We just know how things have been going within the last few years, so.
I understand he's a busy man and I know he helped out with storms because that's where he's scheduled at, it's down at Port Charlotte somewhere like that. But the thing about it is, is this fire department need to get up and going or the people's going to lose interest in it, just like Ms. Jordan said. Uh, the people's going to lose interest in it and walk away, then we're not going to have nothing. Again.
We'll have that on. I'll show, I'll ask him about that Amazon request. I don't see any harm in it, actually. To me, if you have people willing to donate to this, to the fire department from wherever, I, you know, actually. But I'll check with Robert on that, um, Amazon request for funding.
Yeah, I'm like you, Mr. Rowan. It doesn't, if somebody is willing to publicly donate, I mean, that's fine if that's what they want to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I wasn't aware of it, though. You know what I mean? It was a little concerning to me just because I was unaware of it.
Yeah, so I'll ask him.
It's a lot going on.
Make sure it's legit, you know, everything is, that's coming from him and, you know, we all know how that works these days.
Right. Okay. Uh, Ms. Griffith, you're up next.
Commissioners, uh, first item on my report. Uh, in April, the county received a notification of award and authorization from the state's grant manager to proceed with contracting with Appalachia Regional Planning Council to conduct a vulnerability assessment. The attached grant agreement will provide $175,000 to conduct a vulnerability assessment to effectively address the impacts of flooding and sea level rise on critical government infrastructure and vulnerable residents. This countywide vulnerability assessment is required before any design and construction grant funding can be awarded through the Resilient Florida program. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the countywide vulnerability assessment grant.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Uh, I have something to ask, Ms. Griffith, and I'll try to keep it pertinent to what we're doing here. In, in the Regional Planning Council, one that's also been hired to do the update on the comprehensive plan for the county that Mr. DeCampbell was asking about earlier?
Yes, the comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinance, yes.
Right. So we'd have to find out from them where they're at in that process.
I think that they were just, were just awarded a grant. So we ask, we do have to find out where they are with that for a timeline, yes.
But they're doing both of those things for, okay. And then some of the stuff like this vulnerability assessment and other things we have going, we're trying to make them to put all these pieces together to have a strategic plan, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. So right now, we are actually working on, of course, the economic development strategic plan, which will also be one component that plugs in. Um, I know emergency management, each and every single year, they have meetings for our local mitigation strategy. Um, and then we also have a capital improvement schedule, which we update each and every single December. Um, so a lot of those components, you know, whereas it's not in one comprehensive document, we are working to, uh, update all of those plans.
And our projects portal?
That's correct.
For all the projects we have that are ongoing and what stage they're at?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, just, just a note to, you know, we went out for this in April. So for the public to be aware, and I've learned this, and this is a hard thing for me to understand, in any government, it doesn't take, I mean, you're not going to get it tomorrow. You're not vote, going to vote on it today and get it next week. You might not even get it next month or six months from now. Things take time, okay? So just so the community is aware, it's not that we're not, you know, hands off of everything. It's, we're, we're trying, it's just that things take time. So you can see, this is in April that we did this and now we're voting on it to go ahead and proceed for today. So just, just so you guys are aware.
And that's just the agreement, that's still, the work's still...
Correct, yep, correct.
Yeah.
So it's still years, months and years.
It's a crosswalk.
It's right, it's right.
Thank you, it's always somebody else, right? Now, that is true, though. It does take time to get things done, especially when it's not just you doing. If it was all in-house, that would be different. But unfortunately, to get a lot of things done, you have to have partners that you come alongside and they come alongside you to help you get it done. That's where we're at. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, at the beginning of August, the board authorized staff to explore short-term financing options for a rolling beach park facility line of credit, which would enable the county to make necessary facility enhancements at the beach park locations while staying within the statutory 10% beach park spending limitation per year. As Franklin County's pristine beaches are the primary draw for tourists, the enhancement, development and improvement of facilities at the county's beach park locations are important for furthering the advancement of tourism and improving visitor experience. The best rate offered at this time for a short-term line of credit was offered by People's South Bank. The attached proposal offers a fixed 6.75% for 364 days. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached financing proposal from People's South Bank. And in part, this will actually, uh, finance for a very short duration, actually just to get us into next fiscal year, um, the improvements to Careball Beach Park, which was completed ahead of schedule, so.
Pleasure to the board?
Uh, some move with comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Please go ahead, Commissioner.
I just, 6 and 3/4%, I mean, for a county entity. I know you said that's the best we can get, but goodness gracious, I, I just lose my mind. You know, that's, that's insane, yeah. But I know it's, it's needed to do what we have to do, so.
Yeah, it's a big, a big change from, you know, what we've seen previously, for sure.
So all those years, my, kept my credit score up, I guess it don't matter.
Not when the company does what it's doing now, it doesn't matter.
It's a little disheartening, isn't it?
It is, very disheartening.
Well, on the flip side of that, with a bad credit score, you might be looking at 14 or 15.
That's true, that's true, too.
Yeah.
It's the world we live in.
Any other discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item, number three. In April, the county approved the Civil Site Design Task Order for the Landarch Village EMS station. After discussion with engineers and the modular manufacturer, it appears that a site-built structure will be the best path forward for this facility. Um, and the site was deemed to be, uh, suitable for construction. Let's see, the, the 2,600 square foot building includes an office area, oxygen storage, kitchen, break and bunk area for EMS employees, uh, which will also mandate a fire suppression system with it actually having a bunk area. Um, and enclosed parking for the ambulance with ADA accessibility and elevation transitions. Board action to approve the attached $84,975 task order with county engineer Duberry for the structural engineering, design permitting, bidding and contract award and construction oversight services to be paid by the Healthcare Trust Fund for the Landarch EMS station.
Send me.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Griffith, I have a question under discussion. What kind of elevation are we looking at?
Um, actually, the elevation changes were from the EMS parking area up into the building. So likely only, you know, two to three feet, but it was still ADA transitional areas with ramps.
Sounds good. I just was wondering.
I was surprised that we had to have something too because that's basically a hill.
On, on the same piece of property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good, though. We need to have it accessible to everyone. All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item, number four. Uh, the county recently added the construction of a landfill transfer station and administrative building to the county's Restore Multi-Year Plan. The county landfill has reached a crossroads where sometime soon there will be insufficient space to process construction and demolition, demolition debris on-site. Um, the remaining years of life for our county landfill Um, the remaining years of life for our county landfill will be contingent on weather-related disaster events. Without property or funding for a new suitable site, nor the funding that it would take to design, permit, and construct a new landfill, um, of which the attached feasibility study has the latest cost estimate at eighteen million dollars, which does not include property acquisition, um, the county will be forced to follow the same trends set by other coastal communities and will transition to a county transfer station operation for both household garbage, which we currently do, um, and construction demolition debris. Um, that's actually the only type of debris that actually remains at our county landfill at the moment. Um, the attached feasibility study determined that the transfer station was the economically feasible option, um, and although the facility's annual, annual operating costs will be higher than the landfill because it will not have the revenue offset generated by the local disposal. Once this transition occurs, the county may need to, to adjust various policies as there will be hard costs associated with amnesty days and curbside debris pickup. There were two objectives outlined in the county's MIP amendment for this project. Number one, construct a municipal solid waste transfer station operation and administrative building. And two, extend the current capacity or the remaining useful life of the existing landfill. It is the county's hope that by transitioning to the transfer station as soon as possible, the current capacity of the existing landfill can be preserved and operations extended to provide disposal during times of crisis. The county's Restore Consultant Langton and Associates will, will assist the county with the construction grant application to the U.S. Treasury for the Restore Pro, Project. However, Langton has suggested that the county apply for the fiscal year 2023 USDA Disaster Water Grant Program as this is an urgent community need and has a high likelihood of, of a high score for the program, and if funded, would likely move forward to construction much faster than through the Restore Program. This program is limited to rural areas of population less than thirty-five thousand and can be used to develop water infrastructure, which includes drinking water, wastewater, stormwater drainage, and solid waste facilities. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached hourly task order to not exceed eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars for the development of the USDA Disaster Water Grant Application, the landfill transfer station, and administrative building project.
So move.
Any motion to approve by Commissioner Ward? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
I, I, just a little bit. So, they're saying that, um, right here it says with the curbside debris pickup and the amnesty days, there would be some hard costs related to that. Well, uh, one of my things about the curbside service is, if it was not contractors, it would be fine, because we've got some contractors that's pushing this stuff to the road, and it's none of our local folks. They're coming from out of county and doing this. So, we need to get a, a, a head start on that. We need to get that stopped. And if whoever's doing it, they need to be fined.
It's a lot of problems. Well, Ms., Ms. Griffin, when we move to a transfer station, are we gonna be to continue to do roadside debris pickup, or are we gonna think of a different way to do that?
If you continue with the debris, it would have to be stuff that can actually, um, essentially be composted, so it would not be able to have any sort of wood material, because that's, you know, that's kind of been a problem as it is now. You know, where a lot of times, um, you know, construction debris does end up on the sides of the road, and the county does end up picking it up.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so that's, that's gonna be a concern for sure.
That, that was something, Commissioner, I was gonna bring up today in Commissioner's comments. I'm ready to, as soon as y'all are, I'm ready. I'm setting on go. We need, we, I mean, we're sitting here talking about getting, uh, code enforcement, let's, let's make an ordinance. I've rode around, I mentioned this to, uh, Mr. Morone. I've rode around my district, and you see yard debris piles, but not only that, you see, uh, stuff that is not yard debris in there. And it's not, I'm not talking about household garbage.
Right.
In some cases, yeah, but most cases, they've, they've got, uh, you know, metal, you know, I see scrappers out there getting some of that, but I mean, you've got construction debris and all that. Um, we need, we need to get a handle on that. I mean, if we don't, we're gonna exhaust a great asset that the community has, because I don't believe, right now, that there's any other county that does, uh, uh, that has that yard debris pickup service. Now, was me and, um, uh, Mr. Fonda was talking about that. Um, you know, that, that's a great service that we provide our community, but if we don't get a handle on this and get something firm in, in place to where we can enforce this, we're gonna lose that, and, and it's, it's gonna be, uh, I'd just hate to see that type of service leave for the people that are actually doing it in the right way.
The right way.
But it might be that we have to think of another way to help accomplish the same result, because you have to, just to, to make sure you're aware, so we spend, the last time we did this, we looked at trying to do a way with roadside debris pickup. Uh, I wanna say we spend close to half a million taxpayer dollars a year picking up roadside debris between the employees, the equipment they use, and the man-hours we use. It's about a half million dollars a year. And, and, and the current way it's being done, that really doesn't work for, for everybody, a lot of people have complaints with, is we start on one side of the channel and go all the way across. Well, here's the issue, I don't know about you guys, but there are people in my district that as soon as an area gets cleared, they put more stuff there, and it sits there for at least a month, if, if not longer, but at least a month.
Well, I know, I know.
So, it always looks junky. That's another problem.
You're, you're right, but the, the only downfall with that is, is you're gonna force, um, if, if, well, I say force, what it's gonna do is it's gonna motivate people to start burning again. And now, we have issues, I mean, uh, with, with, uh, fire bans, it's gonna, I mean, I, that, that's just potential down the road to be disastrous. I understand, I understand where you're coming from, because I see it too. Um, and I know people that are close to me do the same thing. I mean, there'll be a oak leaf pile there, and then as soon as it gets picked up, there's another one, you, you know, but my biggest concern right now is just the junk that people are throwing in this. And that's another thing that exhausts our, uh, our personnel. They're out there having to sort this out. Um, you know, I, I just feel like we need to, um, put something in place somewhere in, in the near future. I mean, and then that can justify us, uh, right now, I don't think we have, we had a code enforcer, I don't know if we got any ordinances to enforce. So, I mean, uh, it's kind of time to start looking in that direction.
But I know we started having a problem with that many years ago, many years.
Mm-hmm.
And what it was, it was the land, all the land being bought, you know, and people's wanting to clear it out. Where they get a contractor in here, where the contractor didn't want to haul it off, so they just pushed it to the county right of way. Well, we made it to where the county, uh, the county could not pick up contractors' debris. Remember that, Mr. Shearer?
Yes, I remember that.
But now they're starting to do it again, because nobody's there saying anything or doing anything about it. I know Fonda Davis went down to Alligator Point, and there was at least three loads that he took off that I know a contractor did it.
Yeah, same in my district.
Is there any way that we can, we can hold them accountable? I mean, do we have, uh, uh, anything with teeth on that, so to speak, uh?
Well, as Commissioner Sanders said, yes, Commissioner Amison, there is an ordinance on books, however, it doesn't address the issue that you raised, which is mixing construction debris with yard debris. I don't think we have an ordinance that's specific to that, but we do have an ordinance where these commercial contractors are not allowed to push their, the work that they do clean some of this property to the county right of way. They're supposed to actually haul it off.
Right.
But again, it's a, that is a matter of enforcement, but it is a.
But they have to be caught doing it.
That's, that's my thing, yeah.
But I believe, I believe it's an ordinance, I'll, I'll set it after everybody's, you have it.
Let me, let me ask a, let me ask a kind of off-the-wall question, but maybe clarify some of this. One of the other issues, and I'm not trying to bring it in here, but it's pertinent to what I'm gonna say. We don't have a business registration in this county. But if we did have, we would know if we had fifteen people doing yard debris cleanup or ten people, and we could be able to tell if they're coming to our landfill or not. We'd be able to find out. These three are consistently coming in dumping stuff. These other ten, we never see them. So, that, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not trying to make the issue broader, but that's another step that we kind of really need to get to, because as of right now, I don't know how many, how many contractors we have doing that service in the county, and I just don't.
But, Mr. Chairman, with that, we need to be a bit more consistent with certain permits that are having to be pulled as well. Because we can't control that if we, some people are pulling site prep permits and some aren't, you know?
Yep, that's true.
But again, it goes all the way back to enforcement as well, you know? What's a good pulling site prep permit if you don't have anybody go out and inspecting it? And, but I had the same problem in my district, Mr. Amison, and it was about who, because I, I called Mr. Davis, said, look, this is what's going on, and then it's like, well, how do you prove that a contractor dumped the debris? That's another thing, it's like, how do we prove and hold them accountable? I guess would be the next thing. So, I don't know, somebody going out actively looking and taking pictures of them dumping the debris.
That's what it's gonna take.
Yeah, that's what's gonna take.
That's what used to be done, Commissioner Sanders, that's correct.
It's a code enforcement officer.
There were actual people that would take pictures and send it into the office, and we would know and contact that contractor.
And a lot of your road department and solid waste and parks and rickets riding the county, they would do it.
Yeah.
I know there was a, uh, some kind of a, um, I wanna say, uh, a floral, not a floral, but that she, plants and stuff that she was selling over there around Stop Chopping, where she was going down to Alligator Point and throwing all her stuff out.
Yeah.
And she got caught, and we had to, you know, we, we gave her, um, a notice.
Yeah, we did.
And then she stopped it.
There, there were a couple of the contractors from, from Rockwell County that were dumping in Landarch Village and dumping different spots. Eventually, we caught them, you know, we got that to stop. And Commissioners, basically, what's been, what has happened in the past, uh, Fonda, it's Mr. Davis, would have to go out there, play detective, actually go through the construction, the, the, what they dump, look for it, and try and figure out, okay, who has a permit, who's been doing work? That's how we were able to pin down some of these contractors, you know? That's not what you wanna hear. I get it, I see the chairman's look already. I, I know, that's not what you guys, but that's what was done in the past. So, yes, we need to change that, and we need to.
That'll teach us going forward what we need to do.
What we need to do, yes, ma'am.
One thing, too, that might be something good for our landfill to consider is perhaps offer a bin in certain communities. You know, like a bin where if, if, you know, perhaps homeowners don't wanna, you know, drive all the way up sixty-five for, you know, yard debris, but maybe if there was a bin where they would.
Like a recycle.
Yeah, where they wouldn't have to look at it, you know, month after month, but you.
I thought about that, too, Mr. Chairman.
That's gonna be a problem.
Because I thought about that, but then you got garbage, people dumping their household garbage. Because I, I thought of that, too, and I'm like, yeah, that's not a.
I know, because it, I mean.
That's why y'all had to pull up the bins before.
Yeah, people abuse privileges.
People don't follow the rules. It's always ones that don't follow the rules that create problems for everybody.
Yeah.
So, there'll be a household garbage in there, that'd be a nightmare for this town, this part.
Oh, yeah.
It did.
I just know that, that I am tired of looking at, uh, yard debris piled, it's got a mattress and a box spring third on. That's, I mean, it's just junk, and I, I've had numerous people within my district that's complained about it because they're having to ride by it just to get to their house. I mean, you know, I'm not for telling somebody what to do on their property, but when you bring it out to the county right of way, you're on our property then, and, you know, quit throwing your trash out there and, and junking up our right of ways. That's just the bottom line. And, and I would like to see something in place, uh, that we can collectively come up with to start, uh, holding these people accountable. This is, this is not fair to neighbors, uh, neighboring people, you know, I mean, honestly, they, they keep their right of way, uh, clear and do the right thing, and then you just go down three houses, and, like I said, it's not, it's not, I'm not trying to say that I wanna tell people what to do with their yard so much as what they're doing on the right of way. And, and, and also taxing our employees that's out there having to separate, sort this stuff. It's just a, it's just gotten, it's, it's gone on too long. It's just time we do something about it. Along with the contract. I agree with that, too.
Mm-hmm, that's true. Uh, did, we did have a motion in second, correct?
Motion in the second, but no vote.
Okay, okay. So, we're talking about the, uh, eighty-four twenty-four for the development of this application for the landfill transfer station.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item, um, item number five. Included in the county's spending plan with the L A T C F funds was a new metal roof for the Carabel Health Department. The existing shingle roof was the original roof from nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, fortunately, this will be a simple roof replacement project as this building has remained in operation and does not require extensive rot repair as seen with the old Carabel Annex Project. Board action to approve advertising for bids for the roof replacement at the Carabel Health Department.
Second with question.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Please proceed with your question.
And this is, um, the L A T C F, what is, what funding is that?
Uh, that's actually the Tribal Consistency Funds, um, that we received through, um, actually an alert through Florida Association of Counties. Um, and it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, um, sent to us in two allocations. Um, for one, it was, uh, actually one way where we were able to do the playground refurbishment all over the county. We were also able to address the, uh, roof issue at the old Carabel Annex location in Carabel, um, and also the Carabel Annex roof, so we've kind of been able to fit a lot of, of infrastructure repair-type items that would not necessarily qualify for grant funding into this program.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item is item number six. Um, and actually, I had board action, but unfortunately, I have not heard back yet. Not a surprise. So, it's transitioning to board information. Uh, the board had previously discussed the need for clearly marking the channel areas, uh, for the East Point and Two Mile dredge projects. Uh, county staff has reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers to see what needs to be done for this to happen. The Corps was asked if there are plans for, for them to do the additional marking that will be done, um, and/or would it be possible for the county to add additional markers to clearly delineate the channel from boats? If it is possible for the county to add the additional markers within the channel areas, what are the guidelines that will need to be followed as the county will need to provide these guidelines to a vendor to install the markers if we are allowed to do so? Uh, we hope to have a formal response back to you all by the next meeting.
Uh, I would say, from talking to some of the people I've talked to, we might need to, Ms. Erin, check with the Coast Guard.
Okay.
Because I think any placing of markers has to actually be done by them.
Oh, okay.
Because it would be the same way, and this is from talking to some of the local people that are older now, that know a little bit more about it, because they were more involved in seafood at the time. Uh, what they did to get some of the channel markers and the buoys and stuff put up was all through the Coast Guard. It did not involve the Corps.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Has to do with navigation.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe they're gonna help us with that. Uh, I will say, since we're here talking about it, we've still been having ongoing discussions with the Corps about the need to tidy up and shore up some things in East Point, being as nice as I can to the project. They have been adamant that they're gonna send somebody to, to resurvey it, and they're adamant that they will fix it, what needs to be fixed. What the, the differentiation I'm having with them is I keep trying to stress to them that currently they have a dredge within five nautical miles of, of the East Point Channel, so now's a good time to try to handle it. They don't seem as concerned about that matter. So, I just wanna make sure the rest of the board's aware of that. They're acknowledging that they're gonna do it. It's not gonna be any, you know, more cost to the county, but I just, I don't know why they won't utilize what they have available to them.
Because that's too easy.
I don't know. But anyway, I just want, I did want the board to be aware that they're still, they're still talking about sending somebody to survey it. They haven't done that yet, that I know of. Well, as of last, early last week, that's right before we started preparing for the storm and all that stuff, so, you know.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, you were gonna go and find out exactly where the problems was as far as the East Point Channel
Yes.
and the depth?
Yes.
It, it was, was it wrong or was it right?
Uh, well, from what I've looked at, now, I don't have their survey markers to know where they said they did it. We do have the report from them, the final, uh, report, uh, but I know what I'm seeing doesn't look right, you know, and there's areas that definitely have ridges. And it's like I told the general when I was talking to from the Corps from Panama City, Mr. Wayland Register, I said, Mr. Register, they, they brought in, they dredged a six-plus-one channel, and they brought in a barge that they said requires seven foot of water to navigate, to take all the equipment out. And they put the equipment on it and thought they were just gonna come out of the channel like, like somebody in a, you know, in a leisurely boat stroll. Well, it took them two hours to get out the mouth of the channel because they were stuck. So, whatever they did do, they, whatever they did do, they messed it up trying to get out. So, I think everything on the west end, it seems to be consistent and right, but toward the mouth of the channel, going back to the east toward Barber's Seafood, it is a hit and a miss. It is not right. And, uh, so hopefully, when they do shore up, we're gonna get some of that fixed.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're doing.
And that's important, right in there, you need to have all of it figured out.
If, if you were, Mr. Chairman, they, uh, from what I can see, and, and again, I don't have any survey equipments. I'm looking at the contract map and, and trying to, you know, get an aerial from, from Mr. Barber's office window.
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, you can really see those spots, but it looks like, to me, that it's the, the, the part that we paid for
Yes.
that, that is not done properly.
Yes.
That's why I was talking about, don't write them a check.
Yeah, but we have not paid for you.
Because honestly, I mean, it, you know, from where they were, uh, under the, uh, the dredge contract, not the, the permitting map, but the contract map, it quite, it could quite possibly be that they had those specs done properly in that part of the channel. But when you get down there to where we paid out of our T D, T D C funding, or what we're, we're potentially gonna pay, um, it just looks like they didn't do it right. Now, on that, on that end, now, I can't, I don't have any aerial on the, on the west side of, of the channel there, but,
Well.
but either which way, it, it was just bad work.
Yeah. Well, there are also concerns, and it appears, again, not knowing exactly where their surveys are supposed to be, where they say it's at, but it appears on the, on the east end, Commissioner, they did not do the full hundred foot wide.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know about the depth, but they, it, it appears like it nears down to about sixty foot wide. It's supposed to be a hundred.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Leading up to that, leading up to that area. So, that, again, that's some of the stuff they're gonna have to do now. If they come and do what they say is their responsibility, and they say that additional part that we had contracted for to have done, because there was that peninsula there, then it might be that, you know, we have to come and shore up that part. But they should allow us to do it, and they should allow us to use their spoil site without any big, you know, uh, delays or, you know, other things going on, so.
Just to give the other, you all in the public a little bit of perspective on this, talking with Mr. Huggins, who was the contractor with the Two Mile Dredge, they've been at capacity at the spoil site, I mean, you know, they're at full capacity where they're pumping Two Mile out. And I got to thinking about it, you know, Two Mile Channel was not as bad as East Point Channel. Now, you go and look at where they supposedly put the spoil in East Point.
Done in full.
And I'm sitting there thinking, my goodness, if they pump, I mean, because you really had to get some material out of East Point.
Yeah.
And, and if you look at the spoil site, it, it's, it looks like an ant bee.
Doesn't reflect that.
And then you look over here at, at the Two Mile, and we're already at full capacity there, and it was not as big of a product, a project as far as the actual material taken out.
It's because it's being done right.
You see, exactly. I mean, there should be a lot of material across from that island right there than what there is, if, if, and that's my belief.
Yep.
But it just makes, it's just common sense, really, because it, it, that just goes to show you, they did not get the amount of material out of that channel that they were supposed to get, period. I mean, just look at the spoil sites. That, that should be your tail right there.
Well, it's hard to say, so I won't say any further, but it appears like. Well, it's hard to say, so I won't say any further, but it appears like they weren't able to proceed, like they wanted to proceed, cause this board pushed back hard enough to make them change, but we still got what we got. That's what we're dealing with.
And one more thing, too, to add to that, I'm not, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right here. There's, there's a lot of times I'm not. But anyway, um, the difference in those contracts, too, was I think that on that end over in East Point, it was a, you know, a distance, this and that, where, and over on our end, it's a, they're judging this or scaling this by the amount of material they were moving. So there, there, you got two different ways of doing this. I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's, I mean, again, I, I could probably defer this over to the attorney. He could probably read that legal language a little better than me. But, but it looks to me like in East Point, they just said, okay, we're gonna have, then I'm just throwing numbers out there, four hundred by one hundred. Where over here, they're doing actual, they're, 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 uh, measuring the amount of material that they're bringing out instead of, uh, uh, the actual dimensions.
Wow.
So that's something to think about in the future, if we have to, which I'm sure we will see this down the road. But we need to be more concerned about the amount of material that's coming out more so than the dimensions of what, you know, in, in future contracts. And maybe that's some way you can have accountability by getting that, uh, that, that debris or that, uh, silt and all out those channels.
Ms. Rifford, you think we'll have that ready by the next meeting?
I hope so.
Okay. So, anything else?
Uh, that's it? Yep. No, uh, Brumman Park Playground's looking good, and Commissioner Ward already, already covered that.
Okay. Anyone have anything for Ms. Rifford before we proceed? Mr. Roll, before we do your report, let's take a five-minute recess.
Embrace the pace on Florida's Forgotten Coast.
Hi, I'm Cara Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in two thousand and two, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand and surf.
Well, Cara, to me, is much more than an agent. She's become a friend, and since we bought the house, we've needed work done. And she knows everybody there is, uh, that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth in value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often, our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house, and the, the state, the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Cara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at eight-five-zero-six-five-three-seven-seven-five-three. We would like to welcome you to Florida's Forgotten Coast. We hope you enjoy your stay here in Franklin County. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind you of some of our safety guidelines for our beautiful beaches.
Here on the Forgotten Coast, we love pets. Please observe our lease laws on the beaches and on other public places.
When visiting Franklin County beaches, please be aware of beach flags and surf conditions. For the most recent information on these conditions and more, please download the Forgotten Coast mobile app.
It is very important to us here in Franklin County that we make all our beaches accessible to everyone. We have placed mobile masts at different access throughout the county. We plan to add more the coming year.
Franklin County has some of the most beautiful beaches in Florida. Let's keep it that way. Remember to remove all your trash before you leave and leave only footprints.
We welcome you to enjoy our beaches. But at the end of the day, please remember to remove all your beach gear before nine P.M. Remember, May through October, we have other visitors here, the sea turtles. So we need to keep our lights off at night on the beaches as well.
Your safety is important to us, so please remember when visiting our beautiful beaches, you're swimming at your own risk, as we do not have lifeguards on duty.
We hope you enjoy your stay here, but please remember, no glass bottles on our beaches.
When visiting our area, please park in designated parking places only. Don't park in the county right of way or on private property without permission.
Go to florida'sforgottencoast.com backslash beach safety for a complete list of county and beach ordinances and safety rules.
Thank you.
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 Thank you for visiting Florida's Forgotten Coast. Help us keep our beaches as beautiful as they are today for future visitors and residents.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. The next on our agenda is the report from our county coordinator, Mr. Michael Morel.
Please proceed.
Commissioners, you are page twenty-eight. It's where my report, starting on item three, already addressed one and two. Staff received a request from Franklin County High School to authorize a senior class to use the courthouse parking lot during the seafood festival as a fundraiser. They do this every year, commissioners. Done in years past. They're going to start at two o'clock. They coordinate with the clerk, coordinate with the sheriff. The festival Friday and all day Saturday, senior class along with class sponsors. They charge for the use of parking spaces as a fundraiser for their senior trip. I need board action to authorize that access.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Do we get a free parking spot?
No. Wink, wink.
Actually, since you say that, last year, since Leslie Street is closed, you probably don't have to worry about it. There's probably empty spots here. It ain't like it was when it was open, that's for sure.
Yes. Wink, wink, Commissioner Amerson. Yeah, I guess.
All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Also, from Franklin County High School, they're having their homecoming parade. We got a request to close Highway ninety-eight for the 2023 homecoming parade. That starts at two o'clock on Friday on September twenty-second. The route begins at Sea Gillespie and ends tentatively with a left turn to Jefferson Street. They are trying their best to get it extended as people have asked for a longer parade.
I would have to leave.
They're working with the sheriff about St. George Island turnoff, et cetera, et cetera. So if the board would approve the parade route as presented so they could start working with FDOT to get that permit, if they change it, they will update us and update FDOT if they can get it worked out with the sheriff.
Okay, same way.
Second, what comment?
Well, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amson. Please proceed, Commissioner Amson.
I just need clarification with this issue of St. George. Are we talking about the why there at the convenience store?
I guess, yes. The issue, basically, I copied and pasted the most part because I was thinking, what really is the issue? But I was going to let them figure it out as they deal with the sheriff and with FDOT.
Okay. I mean, I can understand if it's Island Drive, but...
Yeah, I was like...
Well, it does pass Island Drive.
Well, the parade route don't go down Island Drive. It just starts at...
Sea Gillespie is down there across from the Dollar Store.
Mini Mall.
And it comes down all the way past Island Drive, all the way to Jefferson Street.
I was like, Commissioner, okay, bye-bye.
No, it's a good, it's a good little ways.
Oh, okay.
They're just starting it further down the end.
Okay.
What I say is anybody's going to use Patton Drive, can't they? Come over that island.
That's what they're saying. This will give them access to Patton. Before, and years before, it always went to right past Kenneth and Abbey Store. But it's right there at that line. So they're talking about moving it further back and making sure that not extracting any...
I like a long parade, y'all.
I understand.
Okay, Commissioner, we'll work on that as best as we can.
We set to vote on this, correct?
Yes, please.
We've already got, I think, with the motion.
Yes. Yep, you did.
I'll vote, never mind.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioner, attached to my report is a draft comp time donation policy. If you remember at a previous meeting, we discussed this. You guys authorized staff and to work with the labor attorney to include comp time as part of donation if some other county employee runs short in their time, especially since we don't have COVID time anymore. Anyone with ample comp time, like Erin and myself, or someone can help them out by transferring some of our comp time to them.
You got sick time being able to be transferred, so y'all just wanting to add the comp time to it?
That's correct. And so you have the draft policy collaborated between Erin and the labor attorney, and they both...
I agree with that. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion approved by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amson. Commissioner Sanders also agree with it. I mean, it's their time if they want to donate to their fellow employee.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, commissioners, last month, we talked about some vacancies on some of your advisory boards, volunteer boards, which is the LTPT, your Airport Operation Economic Development Board, the Byway Management Authority, which was kind of new, and also new was the Regional Rural Transportation Plan Technical Advisory Committee. I've only advertised it on the county's website as we discussed. I've gotten four emails of interest, but there were two for the, I'm sorry, two for the Rural Transportation Plan, one for the Airport Operation, and one for the Byway Management Authority. None for the LTPT, and that was because that was restricted to District One. Do you want me to run an ad or just try it for two more weeks? I'm sure talking about it now will bring more interest back to it again. We've got other things going on. Or run an ad and just continue for two more weeks with the county website only and see what happens?
I'm good with running an ad, and here's the reason why. None of these are more important than the other one, but that local technology planning team, we need to get it back on track.
Yes.
Listen, we already have a difficult enough time being a rural county to pursue funds that's going to help us with different items that we're facing, and this broadband deal was a big deal. We need to get that seat filled so we can move forward. I mean, I got a vendor that I talked to at the fact meeting in the summertime that's waiting to make a presentation to that board about the way they were able to do broadband in some other counties in Florida that were rural counties that now have, are getting really good access at really good rates.
So should we like to advertise?
Yes, I would like to.
Does that even a motion for to advertise? Please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ward to advertise, and second by Commissioner Amson. Any discussion?
Just one, with the airport board appointment, can we make sure that our actual airport board is getting copies of those applications as well? That way they can, you know, that's somebody they're going to have to work with, so...
What I did, I sent copies of the previous set to the chairman of the board, the one that I got in, I have that sent because I haven't presented it to this board first. So once you guys get it, then I send it to them because they'll have to meet and give you guys a recommendation.
I was just making sure we were keeping the board in the loop. I don't want them to feel excluded on...
We all have a full airport board.
Yeah, we do. We do. We're just, we're trying to fill that alternate spot.
Oh, okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with this, you know, I know we've all talked about representatives from each district, but let's face it, it's getting harder and harder for each of us to find someone that may be representative of our district, but there may be someone saying Commissioner Amson's or Chairman's district or Commissioner Sanders' district that might want to serve on one of these boards. I mean, I'm okay with them not being, I'm one of five, but I don't know about, you know, restricting it that much anymore.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like if you've got somebody that's good and wants to be a part of the board, who cares if they're from my district or anybody else's district? That's just my thought.
Yep, they're good. And good, the good thing with the alternate is that that is county-wide, so that's not restricted, for the airport board, that is. The LTPT, that was restricted to the chairman's...
And is that based on what their parameters were of the state?
No.
No, that's what the board at that time decided, which I'm fine with it being either way. I just want it to move forward.
Okay.
But I'm thinking to move it forward, we may open it up to other people.
Okay, I'll remove, when I do the ad, I'll remove that restriction from the LTPT one, and the others, I just have them as general, basically, county-wide. Okay?
Okay.
Now, with that, and I won't harp on it long, some of these, we need to keep district-related because it affects each district differently. So obviously, if somebody from Commissioner Sanders' district, well, we're going to use you. We're going, we're going. Well, you're a punching bag today.
You're clicking it.
Well, you got a broke foot, so you're easy to pick on. You can't run me down. But anyway, what I'm getting at is that certain things, certain things, you can't, you know, affect, I can see where, you know, I'm one of those, I think that we have a lot of assets on, from different districts, and it's not necessarily has to come from Ford or this on certain things, but there are certain boards that we really need to go back and say, and hey, we need a representative from each district because they understand what's going on in that particular district when it pertains to something like that. So we've got to be careful.
Your PC, your planning and zoning adjustment board, that is definitely one you want to keep it. Because that, you want to make sure when an application comes in for that district, that person really does their due diligence to look at it and offer an opinion, you know, at those meetings. That was one I would recommend.
Do we just need to do it like on a basis of what the board is?
Yeah, I would.
I mean, we don't need to just have a golden rule of, hey, it's got to come from the district or it can come county-wide. It just needs to come, I believe, and I'm one of five, or four today, but five, you know, I just think that we need to just look at it per case, so to speak.
Okay. So I'll run the ad. I won't put any district requirements in the ad, but then when the applications or emails of interest come in, you guys can make your decision then based on a board-by-board basis.
Okay.
Motion was second, but no vote.
All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, commissioners, item seven. So Mr. Walker from your WEEM CEO and Mr. Kozar from Alliance CEO, they met with each of you individually to discuss concerns and changes to the management of WEEM's Memorial Hospital. This contract is set to expire sixty days. I believe it is the end of October. So basically, my question is to the board, so you guys selected a committee, so the next step is for that committee to meet to discuss changes to the Alliance management agreement. That meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, nine twelve, a week from today. With the current management expiring shortly, the board may want to consider some type of extension of the current contract to allow enough time for the committee to have reasonable discussions and present options for your review. Reason I say that, I've heard different things from different commissioners that they've got to do. One commissioner said, well, maybe we need to possibly look at an RFQ. That's fine. I mean, but I don't think we can get that done within, by, you know, the end of October and have it done. I will say, I, I'm going to say Mr. Attorney, Attorney Schuler, I did speak to, one of the things, we reviewed my report in the agenda, Commissioner Lockley and I, yesterday evening. One of the things he said, I'll say it now because it's a public meeting, he just doesn't want the contract to slow down the building project. He wants to make sure the board keeps that in mind, you know, and he'll be here next Tuesday and hopefully the rest of the month in mind as we make decisions about the Alliance contract, whatever we do about this management contract, whatever direction it goes. So...
And we weren't going to meet before this meeting because of the storm, we canceled it.
Yes, which, which kind of worked out for the best, to be honest with you. I would have preferred to hear from the board as to how you want us, this meeting, this roundtable we're going to have about these discussions to move on. I prefer to hear from you guys first, to be very honest with you. So it kind of worked out for the best.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
Do the commissioners have to be at that meeting? I got a ten o'clock.
Oh, actually, the opposite, the chairman is the only commissioner that's on that particular meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure you can be there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can't be there. I got several problems with this. One is the committee, which I know we all discussed it, and I know we brought it up, but a lot of people on this committee is of Alliance, the company, so how can they go on here and dictate their own agreement?
So where...
That was going to be my question. Who was actually the committee? I know we've probably said this, but...
Okay, so the committee was the chairman, myself, Erin, Mr. Walker, the WEEM CEO, board CEO, which is Mr. Duffy, and then Mr. Kozar and David Walker. Got David Walker?
Mr. Chairman, I, I know we voted on that, but I got to thinking about that. I just don't think it's right that Kozar, Mr. Kozar and Mr. Walker are part of that. I'm okay with the rest of your name, but they're basically dictating a contract that they themselves are under, so to speak. Isn't that a conflict of interest?
My approach was, and I'm sorry, my approach was, we were going to have this roundtable. I was, WEEM, the chairman, myself, Erin, were going to say, okay, you know how the board feels, you know, we've heard from the commissioners too, this is how we feel, this is what we're looking for in a contract. What can you come up with that meets the concerns that you guys had, the changes that you want made, and we start negotiations that way? And from that meeting, I was going to bring it back to this board and say, okay, this is where we're at. I need to hear from you guys what direction you want us to go in because unfortunately, at that meeting, I can't have more than one commissioner there. But, you know, I mean, I know it's public discussion, but we need to have these discussions to move on. I just, I just want to know what, what this board wants me to take into that meeting is what I'm kind of asking for.
Well, since we're talking about it right now, Mr. Chairman, not interrupt, I'm one of five, but I think we should go off RFQs. I think we should go off RFPs. I'm the one told you that. I'm going to tell you that right now. That's just my opinion. Meeting, whatever, but extending, I know, how, what's the timeline for us to have to go off RFPs? Is it sixty or ninety days? Because the contract's coming up to expire.
Yes.
Who's to say we don't go off RFQs now?
If I can, not necessarily for the hospital in particular, but just the whole RFQ/RFP process, I mean, ninety days is probably a really tight fit, frankly, for the way everyone's schedules tend to work. I mean, honestly, it probably would exceed a ninety-day window, but could you set a really strict schedule? Do the advertisement, get everyone's schedules juggled and coordinated and do it within ninety days, probably, but I would, I've not seen anything involving the hospital in twenty years that happened in ninety days. Sorry, I just...
Well, we knew this contract was coming due, that's the thing. We knew it was coming up, and I guess we probably should have just done this maybe a month ago instead of doing it now. I'm not too keen on extending any contract with them, but...
Something like that needing to have been probably six months ago. Because it's important, and you're talking about a lot of money here, and, you know, well, I have questions anyway. Y'all know how we...
For me, the issue on my end, so I would have to, I'll be tasked with the responsibility of coming up with this RFQ. So I would prefer a request for qualifications because I would want the board to basically interview everybody that responds, this board, you know. I mean, I guess the hospital board should have some role in this, but I would want the county, I mean, it's your hospital. I think you should interview each one. So we have to come up with a language. Language would include, to some degree, commissioners, changes or concerns that you have that you would want to include in a management contract. I mean, I've never had to create a management contract for a hospital before. It's not my thing. So that in itself is going to take time, and then you want to run an ad, you want them to come in, you want to interview them. I don't know if you're going to, let's just say we have five, and we narrowed it down to three. Then you're going to want a second interview with them. All that takes, takes time. And I'm, and by extension commissioners, I don't want you to think I'm saying extend it for another year or two. That's not what I'm saying. You could do six months here and say, we'll decide in six months if we want to renew for another six months, or by then, we have, we had a point for the RFQ, you know, where we've done that process and we got to where we want. It's up to you. This is me asking you guys, okay, where do we go from here?
Can we go to a month tomorrow?
We can ask.
Attorney Schuler, how does the contract read?
Ask him.
October thirty-first is the last day to November first.
There's some method to extend.
Typically, and I'm going by memory here, and I hate to do that, it was a three-year contract, I believe. I think Mike's correct, it expires at the end of October, and I think there's a provision for like a one-year extension by mutual agreement, or maybe it's a one-year extension if it's not terminated prior to the expiration date, but I would really like to pull the contract. I don't like going by memory. Does someone have a copy of this available?
I'm going to send it to you right now? Or do you want to look at it on my phone?
I was going to say, I haven't, I have deliberately not set my email up on this new phone, so...
Send it to you.
Well, on one...
That's one way to do it.
On one part of it, it says that it will automatically renew at, at about October thirty-first.
For a year.
I think it's for a much shorter timeframe, but let me...
So we can send a notice to say, well...
Well, it's got a ninety-day termination for convenience for either party, so I mean, you can call it a month. Well, it's kind of like our rental contracts, say, for Chapman. I mean, it says there are fifteen-year leases, but in reality, with a six-month termination for convenience, it's really a six-month lease. So, ah, here we go, termination, oh, wow, that's small.
So we could, I mean, we could send a six-month notice or just, you know, it's up to the board, whichever way we want to go.
Let us think about how we want to do it.
I'm fine with how the board wants to do it, but I would say this, if we're not in a position to be able to make a clear decision today, we can always have a special meeting if we need to.
Or...
For time purposes.
In addition, I could postpone this meeting on nine twelve until the board has decided what they really want to do, because then I wouldn't engage, commissioners, I wouldn't engage Alliance representatives on this until this board decides what you want to do.
Talking about me engaging?
No, no, no. I mean, having this meeting that's set up for nine twelve to discuss your concerns and how they're going to address these concerns that you guys have, I could postpone that too.
I mean, I've met with them. I've met with Mr. Kozar and I met with Mr. Walker a couple, three weeks back, and I explained to them how the contract, to me, was very confusing, but that's not here nor there, but without going into much detail, I think that personally, we should go out for RFPs, RFQs, see, you know, because is everybody happy with Alliance, wants to extend the contract? I don't.
It just gives us a better idea of what options we have out there.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
I think we need to, you know, make it more competitive.
All right. I wouldn't have a problem with that, but...
Mr. Chairman? The contract does have a termination date of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and it shall renew for a one-year term unless either party notifies the other at least sixty days prior to the end of the initial term. We're already inside that sixty days. It's going to extend for a one-year term, but there's also, as I've mentioned, the ninety-day termination for convenience provision, so effectively, it's always been a ninety-day contract.
So from what you're saying, it's automatically going to renew because we're past the sixty days?
We, notice was not given within the sixty, or outside of the sixty-day window. We're inside the sixty-day window, so it's going to extend automatically for a one-year period, but it's still subject to the ninety-day termination for convenience.
Well, I did want to say something. I didn't meet with the gentleman until week four last, so how in the world was you going...
I just thought this should have been done a little bit sooner than now, but it is what it is.
In fairness to our staff commissioners, we did miss a whole month of meetings.
We did, we did.
So it's not like we were really taking on any tasks there for a whole month, so, you know, that, that could have been helpful to have those regular discussions on a more frequent basis.
Yes.
But, so it looks like it's going to automatically renew, but that termination you're talking about, the provision, is it for convenience or is it for cause?
For convenience.
Okay, so there would be nothing to stop us from proceeding to go with RFQ?
No, absolutely. That's what I was going to say. Then we could go ahead and start the RFQ process if that's what the board wants.
I, me personally, I'm one of five, but I would like to do that.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Do we need to make it a motion?
I would, yes, please.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
So we have a motion to go out for RFQs for the, the contract for those who are going to be managing the hospital?
Hospital management contract.
A hospital management contract.
Yep, so that motion is by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amson. Now, we are looking at management, not leasing, correct? Just want to ask and make sure.
I mean...
Management slash leasing.
It's all good.
Let's cover our bases.
Just wanted to ask, I thought I'd ask while we're there.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to amend that, if possible, to just open it up to everything. That way we have a good idea of what all options are out there.
Would the leasing be an or?
That's what I was asking, I was just asking for clarification.
Yes, I'm in that motion to reflect that.
Okay.
And I'll amend mine, sir.
All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimated?
Now, keep in mind, I am going to go ahead and basically cancel this meeting because I do not want to engage Alliance if we're going out for RFQs, so...
Why not?
I mean...
What do you think, Mr. Schuler?
I agree with Mr. Moreau, depending on what the vote of the board's about. I mean, you haven't voted yet, unless I missed it.
Yeah, we just voted.
Yeah, we did vote it.
Okay, well, then I agree with Mr. Moreau.
Because then that would give, I don't want to give anybody else, like you have some kind of slight advantage that we're trying to, you know, perception of it, thank you.
I'm quite sure that this will give Alliance a head up, too.
Yeah.
But is it Alliance or is it Blue Management Service? That's my problem.
Alliance doing business as Blue.
Or Blue doing business as Alliance something to that.
It's confusing, y'all.
It's a very confusing contract.
It really is.
It made no sense to me, but I'm not a lawyer, I'm buying any of these deals.
Well, I slept at Motel Eight last night, so...
All right.
Well, it should have been at Holiday Inn Express. You did answer all the questions.
Oh, the Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah, they just leave a line out.
Is there even a Motel Eight, Motel Six? I don't think there is a Motel Eight, Motel Six.
Oh, Lord.
Motel Eight's got two more rooms in the Motel Six.
Exactly. I can tell we're getting close to lunch here.
Yes, please proceed, Mr. Moreau.
So, we're at item eight. Attached to my report is a fully executed F.Scop agreement for repairs to Leslie Street. We discussed that a little earlier, along with the notice to proceed. Mr. Travis Wade, the City of Apalachicola city manager, would like to provide an update on this project at an upcoming meeting. In addition to his update, Mr. Wade would like to discuss the possibility of using the funds, I hope I said this correctly, that will return to the county after it was discovered that the city's CRA was no longer valid. I will pause there in case Commissioner Amson asks, what are you talking about, Moreau? So, you know, if each budget, this year, Erin did the budget, you saw that, you don't call it CRA, Erin, what's it in the budget?
Redevelopment.
Oh, yes, yes.
So that fund, each city had a CRA, each city got some funds back, and I'll let Erin explain why they get these funds back.
Because they're all meant sunset.
Commissioner...
No, it wasn't each city, it was City of Apalachicola.
No, what I'm saying, in the past.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, both had a CRA in the past, but...
And then it's sunset.
But there's, the City of, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, ever that look, the City of Apalachicola, it actually sunset is what it was, or it didn't renew, or something.
They, didn't they disband their...
They originally, they actually took action to actually form the CRA, and even though that they, they did not actually activate it, it still went from that original date that they had set up everything. So then, once they got around to actually filing the rest of the paperwork, instead of it being that secondary date, they actually went back to the first date, and several years passed before it was actually noted, and that was actually when they had to repay the funds.
It was a mess, and they had to send the money back. The board, at that time, this board agreed to hold that money and use it to repair Leslie Street, which we had started to do. We had already contacted, it was Dewberry yet? I'm not even sure. We contacted engineers and started working on it, but then the city said, wait, pause, we have applied for a SCOP FDOT grant to fix Leslie Street, so we, we've had that money sitting there earmarked to repair Leslie Street.
How much is it?
Two...
I think it was roughly two hundred, yeah, two forty to two fifty.
Is it going to cover the cost?
Two forty-two cents.
Because isn't there something underneath there that's undermined that they're going to have to go and...
We will find out shortly when we start on the repair.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, now, Mr. Mr. Travis Wade, we, he, he, we've talked about this a few times. He would, if, if they, the city fixes Leslie Street, and you have no other, I don't wanna say use of that money, but no, of that money to, for any other project, they wanna do some repairs to the mill pond down there. That would, I think it would help out the entire county, to be very honest with you, because we have a lot of people that use the mill pond for, you know, different purposes. Commissioner Amerson and I have this conversation about the use of the mill pond, not about this money. So, he would like the board to consider it, but I told him since that money was earmarked for Leslie Street, and it has not been fixed yet, until you guys see significant completion of that project where they're striping or whatever, where we consider almost the end of the project, we will not really want to commit using that money for anything else. Because your thing was, in case the SCOP grant does not fully repair Leslie Street for whatever reason, you guys will pitch this money in to help that job come to completion. If I've said that all correctly, a lot more than I've actually written here.
Mr. Chairman, one, is there a requirement to what you can spend CRA funds on, though? Isn't it a Florida statute?
Well, once it came.
It's not CRB.
Once it came back to you, Commissioner?
It's not CR, okay.
No longer CRA restrictions, whatever they are. It's now your money to, to do it as, as much as you legally can.
The other question is, it's a SCOP grant, is that on their five-year, or now it is seven-year seems like work plan? So we gotta wait five, seven years for that to get fixed? Cause that's, that's a problem too.
Yeah, that is an issue. Why I had, what I recommended to the city a while back is that they let us use that money to pay for the engineering, so that once this, the SCOP agreement was signed, all that could go straight to construction. But they, they chose, they decided.
They might've been able to cause the grant, but.
Well, what would've happened, it wouldn't have been refunded, but they could've still used whatever engineering was done, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, towards the project. You see what I'm saying? Yes, that money would've been spent, there would've been no refund from FDOT for that, cause it was spent outside of the signature date, prior to the signature date of the contract, but at least we'd have been a lot further to the repairs of Le- Leslie Street. Cause, like, like you said, you know, I mean, I know you were just drawing for that one event that the seniors use it for, but think about tr- access to the courthouse every single day that they're open. But they, they did.
To, to help clarify it, maybe, a little bit more, we need to go back to what CRAs are intended for.
That's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, CRAs are intended to be able to do those kind of improvements for, for their situation, it was in the City of Appalachia. But what it does when they initiate that CRA, it locks in their tax that they're paying to the county. And then anything above that goes into the CRA, and what was locked into the county still goes to the county. So, they were getting the, the tax proceeds, it's not city taxes, it's county taxes. There was going toward their CRA to be able to do improvements. It timed out, and we actually caught that we had in our budget to give them money, and it was delayed, and it was already past the date. It was that, or, so, those are all county tax dollars to begin with.
Yes.
So I don't want this board to think that somehow this is money that rightfully belongs to the city that we're retaining, that is not the case.
Good explanation, sir.
These are not city funds, these are county tax dollars that would've been coming to us had there not been a CRA. When that CRA dissolved, because it timed out, we were the ones that caught that we were still paying in to something that had already timed out.
Yes.
And it'd already been over a year when we caught it during a budget cycle. So I just wanna make sure the board's aware, this is not City of Appalachia money we're talking about, and we're holding it from them, these are county dollars.
County dollars on both City of Careville and the City of Appalachia Cola.
But the City of Careville, if, if you wanna see the effects of a CRA, they've done a whole lot with their CRA over the City of.
Well, and when I came on board, when I came on board back in nineteen ninety-eight, I can remember it there being a line item in the budget for C, Careville CRA, and they never used it. And then when some of the mayors got in there, they started using it, and so now, and it's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
But, but it needs to be used for projects that help everybody.
Yeah, I, I guess my only question would be, if we can't use these dollars to help them with the engineering to get this project off the ground for Leslie Street, what can that actually be used for? Cause I, I'm just one, but I'm not forgiving them this money back to use somewhere else. This is about Leslie Street. We've been almost four years now without a, that access to our courthouse. Point blank period, so we need to use our funds, their funds, the state funds, or everybody's funds and get it done. Or I don't, I don't see, I don't see giving them money because they were able to get a grant to fix it. I, I just don't, you know, I don't see them being rewarded for actually getting FDOT grant, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
And we wanna make sure the grant.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see where that draws any parallels to, to giving the city money, but I'm just one.
What I will do is have Mr. Wade at a future meeting, when he has a timeline from FDOT, uh, like Commissioner Ward said, you know, she wants to, she wants to know, well, okay, it's, you've got the contract, you've got access to these funds, when is the road gonna be fixed? I think that's what the entire board wants to know, before we even discuss that money that was returned to the county from the CRA. So I'll, I'll, I'll let him know that. Okay, if there's no more, can I?
Yep.
See, um, item nine, uh, Mr. Chairman, you already kinda tackled that earlier in the meeting, do you have any other, um?
No, I will, I would like to say that, uh, I'm hoping to, before Leslie session starts, to actually be able to meet with Senator Simon, to have a one-on-one and discuss some of that stuff with him.
Okay.
I know he wasn't able to be here that day for health reasons, he had staff here, but hopefully, we can, you know, have, in one-on-one, we can kinda discuss how that meeting went.
Yes.
Uh, not, not just to, not just to, to, to show that we're upset about something or kinda disrevelled about it, but what's the way forward for us? These are dollars that are set aside for Franklin County, we need to find a way to access them. And we need to be able to do it for the benefit of our county, for its economics. But if they're waiting on us to be able to produce what Leon County or Bay County can produce by way of plans and we, we don't have staff to put toward that, we definitely don't have staff to continue to put toward something that's gonna wind up not being able to get past their staff anyway. We just don't have that capacity.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, anyway, I'm hoping that'll happen.
I, I, I would say that you would want, let's try and have, let you have that meeting with Senator before we have this follow-up meeting.
Yes.
With Triumph, the two cities, to try and say, okay, you know, we've had all these discussions, here we are, what can we do?
Yes.
So.
Well, it seems like everything, the discussion we've had, they keep saying, no, can't use it for that, knowing, well, like I said, I've said many times before, Gulf County, Franklin County is not like Wacola or Bay County, you know, they need to make sure that we're small rural, fiscally constrained. They need to know that and allow some kind of leeway.
Yeah, I was, I, I mean, I was in the meeting because of the COVID protocol, but, you know, I was a little disappointed to hear from the outcome of the meeting, cause I, prior to that, you know, Commissioner Amerson and I had discussions with a couple of members of the AO, the Airport Committee, and one of them has, thought they had it in, went to Triumph Board to create this flight school, and then to create dorms, but it, it didn't come across that how they talk to him is how they talk to you guys at that meeting, you know? I, I had high hopes of that, cause I was like, that is an excellent idea, excellent. And we could use the old work camp to create the school and the dorms, I'm like, hello, you know, but I, I just didn't get that more fuzzy feeling from the chairman, from Aaron, when they walked away from that meeting.
But, but to, but to add to what we discussed earlier, so here are some of the things we did discuss, so the board is aware. We discussed a flight school, we discussed dorms, uh, they, they, the way they acted was, to be honest with you, we kept, it was a long meeting, we met for over two hours, and it was not just Franklin County, we had Wacola County's chair there, and Gulf County's chair was there, along with a room full of people. Uh, but the, we discussed dorms, and the way they, they said, when, cause of final tip, if you know anything about me, you know this by now, if you tell me no one way, I think I'll wait to rephrase that question and ask you the same thing over again. Uh, so, when we asked, when I asked you the last time, they said that, uh, that if we could get a flight school going, they'd be willing to discuss the dorms, you know, so, if you, if you actually got a flight school going, if you actually doing improvements to the building and dorms are what's needed, that they would be open to that discussion. I said, okay, good, and they also, we also mentioned the possibility of, uh, getting Haney or Lively to try to use maybe some of those buildings out at the old work camp to do a satellite campus for any kind of stuff they wanna do, whether it be HVAC, mechanical, or whatever they wanna do. Uh, and they, they were, you know, that's something they'd wanna pursue. Anything to do with education, from, from what I gathered from the meeting, things to do with education and or, uh, things that don't require a significant amount of infrastructure is what I think that staff has predetermined it'd be easier for Franklin County to do. That's what I gather. So, that, any talk we had about real infrastructure needs, extending the runway, doing other stuff, they were like, yeah, maybe, but we'd have to see a whole lot more going on before we ever talk about extending the runway. But they did say if we found a way to get the runway extended, but this is, this, so it don't make sense. So if you can find money to get the runway extended, oh, we definitely have money to do all the aprons and the stuff and the, you know, the part where the rail will go to, you know what I mean? We can do all that, we just can't do the main thing, and I'm like.
Which is what we need.
It's, it's a circle dance, is what it is.
But I just want you guys to know that, you know what I mean?
And they're telling other people that come and tell them something, they're just doing a big circle, and they just keep.
Maybe, I don't know.
And remind everybody, that's the county's money.
Yes.
That's the county's money center, two, May of two thousand two. Really was April, but, but, May two thousand two.
Mr. Chairman, so I got clarification on your discussion with them, they're okay with the educational facility, just not the dorms, is that?
Well, they were saying they didn't wanna do the facility and the dorms all at the same time.
Well, I mean, honestly.
Facility, you know, there, and we can show a need for the dorms, that they would, you know, that's, and I'm like, well, why are we gonna halfway do something? Again, that's what I was talking about the first time, and I wasn't trying to be tried or trying to, you know, be crazy toward them, but they're asking us to be fully committed to what we wanna do with the money, but they're not fully committed that they're gonna give us the money to do it. So, how does that work?
I'm just thinking, you know, on, on the educational side, I mean, there's not dorms at Gulf Franklin. There's not dorms, uh, at, at, in Panama at Haney. I mean, uh, I mean, we could, we could get the educational program up off the ground, and they can come in here and get a motel room or something. If they wanna stay, you know, stay overnight, I'm.
Well, that's something, and, and what's crazy about all of it, Commissioner Amerson, is they're the one that even brought up the dorm possibility. And I don't know if it's from discussion with somebody else, but they're like, yeah, but we don't know that we can do the dormitories, what, why bring it up if you can't do them?
Yeah, but don't you think they don't have, uh, some kind of idea of what they wanna do for Franklin County?
Mr. Chairman, though, if you go to the Triumph website, cause I've done that, they're so contradictory as to what they will, like you said. If they, so they need to, you know, update their website to reflect what they, pretty much, let's just say, what they won't cover versus what they will, cause it'd be a lot more simple to, to figure out what they will do, but.
Wonder how much interest they're making off of all this money they've got a virus up there.
Yeah, that's why they.
They don't wanna suspend.
Where is it going?
Here's the big splash.
To the bigger.
And they, they made sure that we're all aware of this in the meeting. So there's a, a pot of money set aside for each county, correct, that was fiscally constrained and are, uh, whatever, directly, you know, uh, under.
Impacted.
This impacted counties. But they are sitting on way more than that. They have a billion dollars they're trying to give out. A billion dollars.
And they're gonna nitpick Franklin County?
They're gonna nitpick everybody, apparently.
No, they're not, you, what I guarantee you, Walton and all them big counties, they, 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 they tapping that fund right now as we speak. But we're sitting here, uh, just getting outplayed with it, and honestly, it's not because we're, we can't, it, it's the rules that they're setting up. That's why, honestly and personally, and I'm not speaking for the rest of y'all, Senator Simon would've had a lot more teeth in that conversation rather than his staff. If he would've been present, you might've seen a different Triumph, uh, attitude. Cause basically, from what I gather is, is you got the same old song and dance from Triumph that they've been doing for years. And that's why I was really hoping that, that the senator himself would be there, just so they could tighten that chain up a little bit.
Well, you gotta figure, that's thirteen years we've been going through there, and I'm gonna tell you something, it took a lot, a lot to even get, we had the original eight counties, no, we have to have fifteen. Then when they added fifteen, then we said, no, they need to add twenty-three. So, I mean, I mean, it was a lot of stuff going back when they started formatting, how, how we had to do, what the county's responsibilities was, you know, and all that, and, and it was just that, and, and now to know that they're even putting more restraint on the counties that, that need the money to put, to put something in here.
It's frustrating.
Mr. Chairman, my question would be, is how do we get Senator Simon back to the table? Because I, I feel like that's the only way we're gonna get anything done, is if we get some help up the line. And, and I don't know where we're at with that, that's why I guess is my question, um.
We should be knowing some shortly, because we should be having sometime in the next month or so, we should be having another conversation with Capital City, correct?
Probably, yes.
About the legislative stuff coming up?
Because you'll see coming up is the legislative delegation is later this month, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that, that, all those, maybe we can get those, uh, all those discussions to align and come together. Be more in our favor, cause it sure hasn't been in our favor so far.
Yeah, and one thing too, that was, uh, mentioned at the meeting as well, was the first response communication system that had been, uh, previously approved for Wacola County, so we are actually working to kinda develop a pre-application for that for Franklin County as well. And, um, the chairman can kinda mention some of the side benefits to that project, as it, as it would kind of encompass the entire county.
Didn't the governor veto Wacola?
Uh, actually, no, it, it got approved.
That's a Triumph.
Yeah, for, um.
You're talking about for regular, yeah, for money from. That might've got vetoed, but the stuff from Triumph, I think they're, they got close to ten million dollars.
Yeah, yep, yep, eleven, yeah, eleven million thirty-eight thousand.
And not trying to speak.
Yeah.
For the rest of the commission, but on that day when they were asking, I said, look, if it takes us making sure we discuss this with both counties, as long as they're good with it, including them, in this emergency response network, I said, I'm good with that. I don't think my board will have a problem with that, and they said, well, that'd be even better, cause that's the thing we think about is, what would the cities do if the county, you know? But one of the other benefits that come of it, I think that was a good part of it, one of the other benefits is, and Wacola had to do it, they actually had to place towers themselves, the county, so the system will, will be like they need it to be when they get it up and running. They won't have dead spots. Well, one of the side benefits and the things that they're seeing that's gonna benefit them for the long run, is now they own towers, and they're able to solicit from some of these cell phone companies, if they wanna co-locate on their tower, and they're actually paying money to the county to co-locate on their towers, so they're generating a fund, it might not be a complete fund, but they're generating dollars toward maintaining the system.
And broadband.
Yes, same stuff.
Yeah.
Same stuff, so, but they had to do that, that was part of the plan to come out with, with them, the people that's putting it together for them, that they had to have, you know, these extra ten towers, so they don't have any dead spots in the entirety of the county, or however many it was, you know what I mean? So, I, I would assume it's gonna be the same way for us, given the fact that owns, the state owns almost ninety percent of our property.
Yeah, a very expensive system, but it would incorporate cities, school board, county, it'd be everyone.
Yep.
The volunteer fire departments.
Mm-hmm. You put a tower up sixty-five or two, you know?
Fifty-three.
Sixty-seven.
Just for clarification, maybe, this, this would bring everybody together on the same system, instead of everybody.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
That, 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 that would.
That'd be huge.
Yeah, that would be great, I mean.
I believe it'd be, so let's say something happens at the sheriff's dispatch, which I know he's done before, but it's gonna be easier this way. It'll be an automatic shift to one of the other county's dispatch answering calls for Franklin County and vice versa. I, I, I believe, they've notified me a few times if I had to do that, getting the system where it's a regional system versus a county system, it makes that even easier.
Well, you wouldn't have a disconnect, then?
That's right.
Yeah, you'd save money in the long run too, because you can, you're getting everything in one package, but instead of everything being contracted out somewhere separate, so.
Yep, that's right. So anyway, that was it in a nutshell.
Okay.
But, but, we do qualify to do that?
We do, yep, yep, so I, I'll actually have. Now, we have to submit a pre-application, and that was actually gonna be an action item on my report for, uh, the next board meeting.
So the, the other, the other thing I discussed with them is, because, so Commissioner Amerson, the reason they approved, and it took Wacola seven or eight years to get this approved, it wasn't an overnight thing. Cause they were trying to say that the statute actually allows for emergency preparedness, emergency response. Statute the Triumph is under, that's why they wanted to do the dollars there. And I told them, I said, well, that takes me right back to what I pitched to the staff before, uh, for Triumph, is whenever we do build a new facility in Apalachicola for wings, whatever it winds up being, I said, we should use Triumph dollars for all the equipment and the stuff inside of it, because it's emergency preparedness, emergency response. And then I went, well, it's not real emergency response, so I said, well, if you're not prepared today, you better hope you don't have one tomorrow. Because if you have an emergency, that's where you're gonna have to respond from. Point blank period, there's nowhere else in the county. You know, there's not another hospital in this county. So, but Triumph staff still differs with me on that, but I'm still working on it.
Yeah, and Wacola was the first one to actually, uh, get this application through. So, you know, now that they've approved them, it should be a faster approval process.
That's it, the president.
It does. Hard time saying no at that point.
Yes. All right, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
All right, number ten, Commissioner Ward, it's your turn. So, she's been in discussions with Mr. Klein, is how I pronounce his name, Commissioner? And I'll, I'll turn the floor over to you, ma'am.
Uh, I've been getting a lot of complaints about the Humane Society, from the Humane Society, with shooting ranges behind there. I'm getting some, um, complaints of shooting TV, shooting garbage cans. It's bothersome to the animals, it's bothersome to the volunteers that are walking the animals. Um, I reached out to him, and he said that, uh, the only issue is, you have to have a minimum of a hundred fifty thousand people living within a thirty-minute drive to the facility, which we do not have. So, obviously, in rural areas, it's obviously an issue. But, um, they did work on a solution back in two thousand and eleven, uh, with building a facility at the sheriff's office, which I have the plans, and I spoke with the sheriff about this a while back. Um, but then it, it's like, all right, well, if we put it there, the sheriff's plans were very, very, um.
Expensive.
Uh, expensive. Uh, he's wanting bathrooms, a whole bunch of other stuff. So, I, I emailed Mr. Klein back to see if we can maybe scale it back, still put it there, but scale it back a great bit to be able to afford it. But then it's like, all right, how we, how do we pay for it? Um, they don't do the grants, obviously, for what I just, the reason I just mentioned, but I talked to Aaron, I've researched it. And the NRA has grants. Um, there's all kinds of grants out there that these gun clubs offer that we can maybe go out for. And I told Aaron this morning that the ones, the submission is due the eighth, which we're out that line, but February will probably be the next go around. But there's multiple entities that, that give grants for shooting ranges. So, I thought we could maybe go out for some potential grants, to see if we can do that. I, I'm sure the sheriff, I, like I said, I spoke with him a few months back. I'm sure he's still okay with us putting it on that property with minimal supervision, but that's kind of where we are right now. And I, I just, uh, Mr. Klein, I'm waiting for a response back from him that says, hey, you know, maybe you can do this grant. Give them, see if he has any recommendations that we could have moving forward.
The plans you have, Commissioner, you said they're from two thousand and eleven?
I think that's when it was, yes, sir.
Because those, those wouldn't have been the sheriff's plans, the sheriff's are the plans you brought to us in two thousand and eighteen.
Well, then he, I've got the two separate plans then. So, his plans and this, this guy's plans.
The reason I know that is because the, uh, the one in two thousand and eleven, I think the only holdback they wound up having was somewhere to put it, wasn't it, Commissioner Sanders? Only the land of where to put it.
Where, where to put it, that was, that, you see back then. But then, after that, Chase Richards came to us and asked us if we would support a firing range out there toward Tilton. And we did, and then after he did it, then nobody was allowed to go to it.
Yeah, then the city shut it off, it was the city's.
That is pay to play.
Yeah.
After we used county equipment to do it, but anyway, on to the next one.
But, but yeah, you're right, and there's a couple of different sets of plans.
That we're not supposed to do.
Which, the plans that I was given to by the sheriff was drawn up by a guy from FAMU, and I tried contacting him, and, and he's not contact, I've tried calling multiple times, I'm like, I'm done, I'm not gonna call you three more times. So, that's, that's why I reached out to this guy. And, and I didn't know they were two different, I thought these were the same plans, but, um, nonetheless. Moving forward, in a nutshell, just to summarize and clarify, I think that, you know, come up, I'll, I'll kind of send you some emails of what I found that we may can go out for grants. Because I'm, I'm assuming this is, I went back and looked at all the minutes too, from past discussions about this. And I know, you know, we'd closed the range down before, um, all that kind of stuff, so.
That was because they closed our road.
Closed the road, yes. But, um, I think that, I think that the, the plan is to put it on the sheriff's office property.
Yes.
That way it could be a little bit more supervised.
Yes.
So, that's, that's, that was the last plan I heard, it's just a matter of getting the money to do it.
I know.
I get it.
Back then, when we were discussing, we went to the Division of Forestry several times, several times. And they would not do it, and, uh.
I would prefer it up sixty-five, which I guess the jail is up sixty-five, but I mean, further up sixty-five, but I don't think, like you said, the state.
The state would give us some land to put it on that.
Right, but I don't think that's an option.
It would be of public use, I, I don't see whether it'd be a problem.
Legislative delegations coming up in a few weeks, you can ask your representatives.
Because I think that's what, actually, Commissioner Sanders was here then, I'm just reading back from it. But when Commissioner Jackal was in my seat, I think they had plans drawn up, and the, the real thing they ran up against was where they're gonna put it. The county didn't have the land. But I can tell you, since then, next time you're up in Panama City, Panama City Beach, go look at their range, because they, they took that money they were gonna put it here, and they put it there. And it is a huge range. They have everything from archery to pistol to rifle to whatever.
And that was F, FWC money.
And, and that's, that's who this guy is, is with FWC. So, I'm hoping he can help us out with some money.
But you gotta have a hundred and fifty thousand residents, is that what?
And be able to get to it.
Within, within thirty minutes, drive time.
So, they're saying they don't want to spend those kind of dollars in residential area, rural area, is what they're saying.
But yet, still, they want ninety percent of our land mass, but.
Well, I'm tired of all the bigger counties getting stuff and us getting nothing.
Yeah, why can't we?
I'm tired of that.
We can't, I mean, is there any leverage at all that we have?
That's why we need to talk to our legislators.
That's why I said.
That's one thing good about this, this lobbyist that we got. Maybe we can start getting some leeway, because that's the only other option, is to talk to our legislators about it and lobby for things up at, at the state level.
Yep.
That's what I said, that's why I meant just a while ago about there's, don't you believe that there ain't people out there that's got plans for Franklin County? Because they do, but it ain't us locals, you know?
Well, that's why we need to start being more restrictive on that.
That's what I was just about to say. What we need to do is start remembering this, and when the state comes wanting something.
Tell them. Well, we already did on one thing.
Well, we can keep on. I mean, that's just, just ridiculous.
So, we're still waiting to hear back from Mr. Klein, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I won't try.
I did have a question though, with what you got here. So, where's, where's the property the sheriff has? You talking about their range behind the jail?
No, you're talking about making a public range back there, making it nice.
Would their, would their range right now exist, is that what you're talking about?
No, it's a little bit further down, further, you know, where the, it's not, it's not school board property, it's right there between.
Right close to the school board property, a little behind the actual, where he has all his.
The state has a big piece of property, but they were just giving some of that.
Something we can talk to our sen, our senator and our representative about.
Don't get me wrong, I understand that shooting the TVs and all that, I've shot at that range before, and I've seen some junk out there.
You shot TV?
I didn't take one out there. Let's put it that way. But, um, but as far as the Humane Society's complaining about the guns going off, you got the sheriff's range right there too, where they complain about the sheriff's.
Nope.
Uh-uh, no.
I mean, that's, that, I mean, I can, I mean, I can understand it, trust me.
Well, it's kind of a safety issue too for me, because if you think about it, if people, I've heard there's been alcohol involved with people out there shooting too. So, if you think of it in terms of a safety issue, you've got the road department, you got the landfill, you got the, uh, Humane Society, and you got somebody just willy-nilly shooting at a TV and say a stray bullet don't ricochet and hit one of the Humane Society employees or, or landfill employees.
I understand.
It's, it's a safety issue and a safety concern. And, um, I don't know, I just, this has been going on for a good little while, and, um, I've been trying to, to do something about it, but it just seems like I get hit, keep getting hit with brick walls, so I'm just trying to keep working on it, but just, you know, there's all kinds of, uh, what do you say? I'm gonna keep on keeping on, but it's just a matter of where everything can fit and how we can do it in a way where it don't cost our taxpayer money, but make it where people can stop a shooting range too, you know? I don't want to take that away, because we have a lot of hunters. I shoot guns, I, I don't go out there and shoot TVs, but, um, I just, it's something that we definitely need to move forward for our county to do, because where it's at right now is not, not feasible, not conducive at all.
Maybe Commissioners, Ms. Tracy Busby, with her wealth of knowledge, can help us look for some funding, uh, for that. If it's, especially since it'll probably, more than likely be multiple grants, we're gonna need to get this done, that's what it sounds like.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the primary cost too, I mean, I'm not really a big gun person myself, so I don't really know what the.
I think the cost was on, uh, it's not on this what he sent me, but I think it may be on the sheriff's office thing, but, and, and those plans, I actually have a copy of, hard copy. But I thought about too, you know, in my thinking, I'm like, you know, I try to think outside the box, is this sports tourism thing, you know? I mean, if we have a shooting range where, as the chairman said, you got bows, you got clays, you can shoot.
Shoot skeet?
Skeet and all that, maybe that's something that can draw that as well. But again, it's all a matter of paying for it. And, and there's all kinds of grants out there, it's just a matter of what we qualify for and what we can get, and how much of it we can get. You know, I, I don't mind scaling back what the plans were that sheriff had, because we'll have to if we're gonna be able to afford it. But then, again, I also want it where if we do do the sports tourism, we have that option as well.
Interesting.
Well, some of that sports tourism stuff though, uh, I don't know what all it entails, and I'm not trying to act like I do, but I do know that we own about fifty-six acres of property that's wooded right now between the cleared off area that the school owns by the sheriff's department going toward the road department, that's all county property. So, it might be that a gun range can be put there and be put away from everybody, you know what I'm saying? That's the other thing, I think you have to have a pretty good distance back there.
They would put up berms, I mean, if, if we did it right, you'd have, uh, you'd have berms on.
But we own property there.
Your left and right.
It sounds like we've got the property, it's just a matter of getting the, the money for it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next three are informational items. One is your reminder of your public hearings this afternoon at five o'clock. Both are public hearings or resounding requests, I don't anticipate too much resistance about this. It's all the way up, pretty much at the county line going towards Liberty County. So, that's at five, yep, I didn't put that in there. Um, the next, your first budget public hearing is a week from today at five fifteen, right here in your meeting room. Uh, for the public, that will be streamed on Zoom only, not on Forgotten Coast Television. The third is, just a reminder of your next regular meeting, which is two weeks from today at nine AM.
And then our legislative delegation.
Yeah.
Did I, I missed that?
You missed out, that's, that's important.
Yes.
I wonder why the legislative delegation started coming at ten thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning, instead of doing the night, where they could see the public?
That's a reason, there you go.
I would tell you, uh, Mr. Schoeff is the chairman, and he sets the time. I mean, Representative Schoeff, not Mr. Schoeff, Representative Schoeff, Representative Schoeff is the chairman.
Yeah, I know you're the chairman of the local delegation, but, uh, I, I, I ain't the chairman of the local, I mean, at the local board, but I'd like for, uh, Mr. Commissioner Jones, if he don't mind, ask him to, to, next time we have a legislative delegation meeting, if they don't mind to, uh, to do it in the afternoon, at, at the earliest convenient, to be able to accommodate people. And see what he says.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman has my report.
Okay, anyone have anything for Mr. Merle?
Mr. Merle, just, just, Mr. Chairman, just for, for time's sake, I know that today we have to come back at five. And I know that we talked, I was the one that wanted the public hearings and workshops and things to be at five, but I think that, obviously, today, we're gonna be leaving and coming back for like five. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it's not gonna take long, I don't know, I could, could be wrong. But, for things like this, can we nitpick or take away or choose what we have during a regular meeting versus what we have like at five? I think that the, I think the biggest complaint I got was more or less the workshops, like the RV ordinance workshop, all that stuff, where people couldn't be, the public couldn't be a part of that, because they work. Um, some of this other stuff, you know, yes, it's pertinent and important, but, um, I mean, if it's something like that, then maybe we could get with Courtney and say, hey, did you have any opposition to this? Do we need to do it in a public hearing format at five, or is it something we could cover in our regular meeting? I don't know how the rest.
Yeah, so.
Actually, I was gonna address that too, because, I mean, you've got Commissioner Sanders that's gonna drive over here at five o'clock this afternoon, and I guarantee you, we probably won't have anybody in the crowd.
Yeah.
For, for this little minor thing, can we pick, again, kind of like, uh, we were talking about earlier, pick and choose, or is this something that we have to have set in stone for?
So, what, what I will do is ask, uh, Mrs. Banksen and Attorney Schuler that when they're scheduling public hearings, as part of their request to this board, they ask you at that time, what time would you like this scheduled for? And we could discuss, you know, again, like for zonings, Courtney could pretty much tell you how bad the P and C meeting was, you know, as, as they brought this up. So, all you guys pretty much do is, uh, based on their recommendation, you go ahead and allow the public hearing. So, it could be done there, Attorney Schuler could do the same thing when he's bringing up a workshop or a public hearing for you, and that's on his end. That's really simple, Commissioners. That's one more question to ask before the motion is made.
Or, or you could just change your meeting if I, if I can be done with it?
Really?
Just start at five and keep going.
I just don't have enough gray hair, I don't have enough gray hair for you, Mr. Chairman, okay.
Might not get out here till two AM.
Is that even more incentive to hurry?
Oh, yeah. We're just batting a thousand today, aren't we?
Either which way, I'm good with.
You see the attorney.
Attorney, uh, Attorney Schuler. Commissioner Ward, I, I know that you brought that up, but we all voted for it.
We did.
So, we were, you know what I mean?
It was a trial by error too. I really said, if it don't work out, we can change it.
All right.
Kind of figure ways, new ways out. I just, I want to make sure that, if, I'm sure for big things, obviously, we could do it at five. But this stuff, little stuff like this, I mean, to me, like, like Commissioner Amos has said, poor Miss, Mr. Sanders gotta drive all the way home and all the way back, unless she wants to stay in town and party a little bit, that's one thing, but.
I haven't got nothing to say, but I love Franklin County.
Thank you. Anything else for, for Mr. Merle? Commissioners? All right.
Turn this down.
All right, Commissioners, the draft volunteer fire department contract for Landarch St. James was on my report today, because I believe that Commissioner Sanders wanted to defer the discussion until Mr. Amick was here to make his presentation, but he's not made his presentation today. So, how does the board want me to proceed on this item?
I would wait until Mr. Amick, or whatever his name is, is gonna be here. And Mr. Schuler, thank you for bringing it up today.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to motion to table that, or what do we need to?
No, I, I was not requesting.
I've read it, I've read it out, it looked pretty good, but we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I, I, I don't want to, uh, release the draft until the board has reviewed it and discussed it with me in public, and given me whatever corrections or additions you're going to recommend. Uh, the next item is, uh, I am requesting board authorization for me to review and assess a purported claim that I have received from the Gills and Osborne families, uh, represented by Attorney Clayton Studstill.
and a purported claim that I have received from the Gills and Osborne families, uh, represented by Attorney Clayton Studsteele. Uh, they are alleging flooding damage to their property as a result of the county's recently constructed multi-use, um, path that, along Alligator Drive. I notified Mr. Studsteele that I think his notice to the county is procedurally defective and doesn't comply with the statute, but nonetheless, you know, subject to that reservation of rights, I think we still need to address it, so. Board authorization is what I'm requesting, so that I can review and assess this purported claim that has been made.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, you're done.
And then, although I, I usually don't address my informational items unless the board has questions for me, my, my first informational item is the public record request of the Corps of Engineers. Um, I have this morning sent a text message to, uh, the attorney from the corps that I've been working with, uh, his name is Mr. Joe Given. Um, my message to him this morning said, "Michael Schuler here, Joe, good morning, any update on the survey or the re-survey of the East Point Channel and the relocating of the dredge to East Point?" Uh, he responded about ten minutes later and said, "Good morning, Michael, I was able to confirm that the survey was done, thankfully before the effects of the hurricane happened, however, they have not completed the comparison of the two as of Friday. Uh, of course, now there will have to be another survey to determine what reduction of the project may have occurred as a result of the hurricane so that it can be restored when federal disaster funds become available." It says "I," he's referring to himself, Joe Given, "ask Whalen to let me know when the results were available and to see if he can do anything to speed it along." My response was, "Thank you." Um, I did not see in there anywhere a specific response to the potential relocation of the East Point dredge, or the dredge from Two Mile to East Point, but I guess if they still haven't completed their review, they can't really make a decision whether they have, have to relocate it or not. Um, and then, although it's not in my report, I don't think, yes, it is, the, the public record request, I'm, I'm told by Attorney Given is supposed to be sent to me sometime later this week. That public record request, of course, was, "What contract do you have for dredging at Two Mile in Appalachia? What contract do you have for dredging at the East Point Channel?"
He's got till the eleventh.
Well, he says they have twenty days, and...
The eleventh is twenty days, I counted it down.
You, you've counted, you've calculated it all? Yes, ma'am.
Well...
He got it to Monday, he's got it to Monday.
If they did survey the channel, and yes, I know I usually know where it is, they probably did it at night.
Why'd they do it at night?
Cause there are too many people that sell businesses on the channel.
Yeah.
They've not seen a boat in that channel.
And I've been looking too, to see if they were gonna come back, and I know, I know the chairman and I both have rode by there several different times, separately, of course, um, just wanna make that note, and I have not seen anybody there, and I've got people on the lookout, and you do too, I'm like, hey, guys, they gonna let us know, trust me, we're gonna know.
Turn Facebook on, neighbors in that town, let me have video.
Yeah, they, they know.
Anyway, we'll see how it proceeds, but thank you for that update.
Uh, and then just, uh, additional information about the purchase of three acres from East Point Water and Sewer District came up after I sent my report out last week. I did receive an email from Thurman Roddenberry delivering to me the survey for the three acres, but I don't have the appraisal work back for the three acres, and I have followed up, uh, with, with, uh, Mr. Terry about, well, a couple of appraisal projects out there, the, the, the two appraisals for the land swap at the airport, uh, the potential purchase of three acres from East Point Water and Sewer, and also the appraisal for the old Gulf State Bank Building, uh, in East Point.
The, uh, have we heard from St. Joe Company about that East Point property?
Uh, yes, in my, my original draft, I had not heard from them, but I did get some, uh, had followed up and got some additional information just before I sent the report out. Uh, St. Joe Corporation has responded, uh, to the title company, uh, they, there's, I can't remember Ms. Monique's last name, but, uh, anyway, they, they have responded to her and have requested draft documents, a draft corrective instrument, and a draft release of the right of first refusal. Now, I haven't seen where Ms. Monique has sent them those drafts, I can't say that she hasn't done it, but if she did, she didn't copy me on it.
Okay.
Thankfully, they did, because I have, uh, called them, emailed them, and sent a letter to them. And I was, you know, you know how it is, sometimes you're like, "Oh, boy, you know, has this been lost in a, a, an administrative black hole." But thankfully, they did respond, and Ms. Monique's working on it, so we're making progress.
Anything else here that's informational, Commissioners, y'all wanna know anything about?
This number seven informational item, that shouldn't be against the county, that should be against FDOT, since it's highly...
That's what we were talking about earlier.
That's the conversation we were having with Commissioner Amerson, where the county allegedly has voluntarily undertaken to perform maintenance on a state right-of-way, in this case, allegedly mowing the ditches, and so, you know, we're, we're being drug into this lawsuit. I mean, from a risk management standpoint, the best thing the county can do is say it's a state right-of-way and let the state deal with it, and then complain with them, but, um, allegedly, we have been maintaining the, the, the portion of the state ditch in front of this gentleman's property. As you can see, they, uh, did not comply with proper notification to the county before they sued us, and I convinced their attorney to dismiss the lawsuit, but although I haven't been served, as of the time I'm sitting here, I mean, they say they're going to refile and sue the county and the state.
Is there a statute of limitations?
I like my case better than, I like their case, but, you know, you're still spending resources litigating, which you can avoid just by not, I mean, Dad always, Ms. Cheryl, Dad always said, "You don't voluntarily take on an obligation that you're not legally obligated to take." This is the, this is the exact reason.
Yes, that's right.
And there's no statute of limitations on anything like that, is there?
Um, there's always a statute of limitations, but I'm not sure at this point that I, you know, what their amended complaint is going to read. I mean, they're, they're basically saying it all occurred within the last year, I think, so the statute would not have applied.
Got 'em calling, cause they're getting flooded out, and then you got, go get it cleaned up, and they call and say that they're gonna see you, cause you getting, you flooding them out now. It's like a thing if you do nothing.
I'm just curious about, what, what type of damage did it do?
I'm sorry?
What, what type of flooding damage did it do to the individual's property?
Allegedly, the ditch was not properly functioning to flow the water, and it backed up and flooded their yard and their property, is their allegation.
Water gets to the point of least resistance.
Did it do, I mean, did they have structural damage with their home, or is it just they got a mud puddle in their yard?
They're claiming that, that their house was flooded, is what I recall the, the litigation saying.
On Highway ninety-eight, it's not on stilts? I mean, is it, is it an elevator?
I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting, you'll know where this is.
Any others for Attorney Schuler? Any Commissioner comments?
I have you, your Commissioner comments at the end after the public hearing, so you'll be in recess, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna recess until five?
Well, yeah, but I just wanted to say some.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that, um, you know, we talked a little bit about the storm, uh, Hurricane Idalia that hit around Keaton Beach, Perry and all that, we are so very lucky that that didn't happen to us. But y'all keep those folks in your prayers and stuff, because everything, a lot of those folks, everything they had is gone. And we all, even though we sitting in our nice house with our air conditioning and stuff, it makes my heart bleed, because these, the area it hit, it's some of the dense, uh, undense population, but they're the neediest people, you know what I mean? They need, just like we do, when we have a storm. But anyway, just, just remember, everybody, in, in your prayers, and hope for fast recovery.
That's, that's the, the last of old Florida.
Yes.
I was telling my dad, if you had Mexico Beach, I mean, you, you start driving from Pensacola to Miami, and tell me how many places and areas that still have homes that are built on ground level by the waterfront. You had Mexico Beach, Michael took that out, that place will never be the same, that's that old Florida cracker style living, same thing with that area there. And I mean, I, I mean, that was like the last of the Mohicans, so to speak.
You said that, and there was, after we talked about that in there, we, there was an article online about exactly what you said, like, the sixth day, I saw the article the next day. Old Florida, last of old Florida.
I'm gonna sue them for plagiarism.
And I mean, it, it just wasn't, it just wasn't, the coastline, it was all the way up.
Yeah, that, that is a shame though, but that's the last of, you know, if you think about it, you, you won't see that anywhere else now, it's gonna be stilts and, you know, uh, new development, yeah, it's gonna be just new development. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it, but it just, uh, you know, I mean, it's...
That's why they were so quaint, you know, like Cedar Keys, Stonehenge, Whoshee Beach, Keaton Beach.
Yeah, I mean, it's got that curb appeal, so to speak.
The old Florida feel, yeah. Anyway, keep them in your prayers.
Definitely.
Well, let's recess till five o'clock.